I just got to tear that whole thing off.
To the July 28, 2025, Fork Session for the City of Idaho Springs. Going to kick it off at 5:30 right on time because we've got several items to cover. I spoke with Jimmy Clark. He won't be here for the regular meeting. But he is still working as of right now. He gets off about 6:15. And first thing I'd like to kick it off is Masonic Lodge mural and Park Proposal. And welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
That's an impressive-looking rendering here.
Thank you very much.
Danny Tomlinson, I think you know everybody here.
I do, and it's an honor to be here, and I appreciate the time. And I want you to know that we all are in the burping of this day. And maybe the conceiving of this day. But yeah, we're... This is an idea... The Masonic Lodge that I've been a member of for 58 years is directly out the front door here, across the street. And we own the property from the building on out to the rock wall that you see. What you see here is an actual photo of the lodge building with the artists rendering of what a potential mural might look like on it. We used to try to grow grass there, trying to find volunteers to water it, and it basically was not a park, and it didn't serve a good purpose. So for the last couple of years, we have purposely not watered it, not tried to grow grass. And if you look out there right now, it's dirt with a few dandelions and weeds chicken up. And I don't think that's a very attractive use for that piece of property. But I do think that there's some potential here to create maybe even a destination. Mary and I have talked about this. I think this could become a destination, a Veterans Memorial Park honoring the veterans of our nation's armed services. If you look at the history of our country, going back to George Washington and the Continental Army, George Washington is probably the most famous mason that anybody has heard of or knows about, whether you're a mason or not, in America. Thirty-three of his 64 generals in the Continental Army were masons. A number of people like Lewis and Clark, Alfred Bill, Hitch Harsin, the people that... And then Ericson, Colorado, Henry Tellard, Rupen Revenus, they were all masons. And if you look at the Declaration of Independence especially, it essentially is a document written based on Masonic principles. Paul Revere, Ben Franklin, John Warren, the first general officer killed at Patrick Hill in the Revolutionary War, those men were all masons. And so the tie between masons and our country's military services is extremely strong. John Paul Jones, the one on the far left, that's USS Constitution, John Paul Jones, father of the US Navy, was a mason. In World War II, World War I, virtually all of the three-, four-, and five-star flag officers were masons. So there's a strong connection here. And as well, I don't think that we can ever be thankful enough to our country's veterans for what they are willing and have been willing to sacrifice in order to preserve our freedom, fight for our freedoms and preserve our freedom. So it just kind of... And this really is my idea that I kind of bounced around a few guys at the lodge with favorable results. They all are in favor. But this piece of dirt here is basically unusable at this point. It's too small. If we sold it, nobody could build there because of setbacks and everything else exists. And so I'm thinking that a logical and constructive way to use that piece of dirt would be to cover it in papers, put a fence around the top of the rock wall that's there now, put a wheelchair ramp probably on the west side, have the entrance right up by the lodge building, and make it truly a Veterans Memorial Park. And I think that it would be a huge draw for Idaho Springs, right at the edge of Business District and right across from City Hall. And I think that it would be one of those things that put Idaho Springs as far as supporting our country's veterans. If you look at it, at the artist's rendering, on the far left, we've got George Washington kneeling at Valley Forge. They should have all died here. They didn't. You've got the USS Constitution. You've got some World War I and World War II planes up above. You've got the Bennington flag or the Betsy Ross flag, the original 13-star flag. As you move a little bit further to the right, you see a World War I soldier. Up above, you see a couple of F-18s, which are modern-day fighter planes. And look down immediately behind George Washington, that's the D-Day ribbon. And then the rings of Iwo Jima. Sometimes... You can just talk and excuse me. And I'm a Vietnam vet. I was a damage control officer on an ammunition ship in the combat zone. We were deployed to Vietnam for 27 months. Damage control officer, ammunition inspection, combat for...
I was just thinking, what would your house do on that one?
You do your job perfectly every time in case you don't get a second chance, and you do it. In any event, this is extremely, extremely important to me. If you go up above, that's a battleship. That's what's called full battle rattle in the lower right-hand corner. Those are the modern-day soldiers that are over wherever they are, in their armored gear, 60 pounds of gear on their backs and wrapped around their bodies and whatever. And what we've tried to do is incorporate Continental Army and the Revolutionary War, World War I. I consciously made a decision not to include anything in Civil War. Include World War II, Vietnam, and I think where the Vietnam ribbon, the yellow and red and green ribbon is there, I think, as I said, this is a work in progress. And there's a statue of free soldiers in Vietnam at the Vietnam Wall in Washington, DC. And I think maybe a photo there to represent the Vietnam War would be better. And obviously, so we run the gamut of the worst. World War II and Korea kind of led over in each other. But in any event, my idea is to put papers in there, have a gazebo that would be there on the east end that would give people a place to just sit, contemplate, look at the mural, check out the detail. Maybe remember who did it. Put in there in church pants. Now, when I say that this is an idea, it's an airplane that we're building as we go down the road. This is the first formal meeting that I have had with anybody or any group. Bart Bachmann and Killer Williams and I have talked with the artist, the mural artist that has done this artist's rendering. He's done a number of murals down in the Trinidad, Bubba, Colorado Springs area. Very, very good. The mural would be... The mural would be about a, probably would need to be retouched in eight years, seven, eight years, something like that. Especially being on the south-facing wall. The, we have not even, the Masonic Lodge owns that ground, and we would have to come to some sort of an arrangement. And there are legalities to be worked out. My thought is that either we could sell that piece of, that small piece of real estate to the city, so that it becomes a city-owned property. Or lease it for, a long-term lease for a dollar a year or something like that. To avoid insurance premiums that we may have as a Masonic Lodge, in terms of anybody that might trip and fall or something like that. And recognizing the fact that we've got limited funds at the lodge, we're not a wealthy lodge. We, some lodges in Denver have sold their Masonic Lodge building for a million dollars, and we haven't. We got fifty members. Scott right there sends his dues check every year. So the legalities on how we would make that a Veterans Park. My own preference, I think, would be either to sell it, sell that piece of basically unusable property from the Masonic Lodge. We have no plans to expand the lodge building or whatever, we're quite comfortable with where it is. Sell it to the city or, as I said, enter into a long-term lease. I think the maintenance, because it would be papers down there, would be minimal, empty and trash, taking them trash barrels, that sort of thing. There are certain things like the wrought iron fence that is not there now. I think that would be absolutely, absolutely required in order to keep somebody from falling off. If you get down to the far east end, it's about a four-foot drop from the top of the wall there. If you think about the veterans who might want to come and visit, most of them are going to be seventy-eight years old. A good number of them are going to be in health affairs or on walkers. And so we want to put in a handicap access ramp probably on the west side of Seventeenth Street, along the sidewalk there. At the entrance right at the westernmost corner of the building. Those are kind of my thoughts. I, the idea is, in its infancy, this is not a final draft, this is a work in progress. And I really wanted, before I went too far down the road, I wanted to get at least an implied blessing, if you will. That this does make sense. I think that would help beautify Idaho Springs. I think, I grew up there, I haven't lived here all my life, not yet. But I have lived here damn near eighty years, seven years. And I want to do what we can to beautify downtown and create something that will recognize and honor our veterans.
Danny, I'm going to go around the room, I want to get the panel of council on this. I think we all recognize, we don't have a lot of open space for the public, particularly downtown. And this, as you, I think, very correctly pointed out, was just completely unusable. It's been a struggle over the years to maintain it. And what you proposed with the zero escaping and a beautification of downtown, I would assume would be very welcome. Obviously, we don't have enough time to get into the nitty-gritty. I would just point out that a lot of examples exist of how we have utilized property amongst several groups. A great example is down on the east end, the rec center, as we all know, has quite a nice piece of flat ground down there that's technically owned by the city. Well, we have absolutely no designs to do anything with that property but have that as recreation. So even though we technically own it, we lease that to the rec center for just a small token every year or so. So we do do things like this.
And we definitely would want this to become a public park. I use park in a very generic sense. Yeah, and a place where people can come sit and have their lunch.
And I apologize to you because we have so many things on the agenda, but I would like to go around. And I'm going to go a different rotation this time. I'll start with Scott, and we'll look the way around to Kate.
Let me mention one thing real quickly. I didn't talk about money. We think that all park estimate for the budget would be in the sixty to seventy thousand dollars a week. Mural is going to be about thirty thousand. I think we can sell some bricks and raise some money there, and we'll be able to get some donations. We've got hard donations for about five thousand already. But total budget is going to be in the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range, probably less than. Thank you.
All right. Scott, your thoughts about spending some time on this or a future work session?
I think it's excellent idea.
All right. Jeremy?
Sure.
Janine?
Yeah, just one clarification, so imagine the mural and the park being a collaboration between the city. So the whole project, I wasn't sure if the mural and the park were separate or.
Oh, no, no. This would be the deal. Yeah, and I think it would be, obviously, a partnership between the Masonic Lodge and the city.
And Lisa, your thoughts?
I like it, I agree, I think that's a tough area to keep going now. Also, I think we could integrate with, we have a discussion to integrate with the cannon that the city owns. Because that cannon sits outside and it is not protected, which allows it to continue to disintegrate and we have to keep updating it.
And Lisa, you know, that just, we're on the hook with the state. Because we wanted to get a cover over that immediately, and it was denied. So. Yeah, we had thought.
So we're not going to be able to move it from the library?
Well, that, there was thirty-some thousand dollars raised to restore that cannon, and sadly, that's always been its home. The city accepted it, I think, just about ninety-five years ago. And I really think that it could stay there as long as we had some kind of.
Cover over it.
Right?
I just worry about the.
And I bring this up because we're on the hook with the state for, I think, about eight and a half more years. And then we would have a free hand with the grounds, but a good, good point.
Well, it makes sense, it's a veteran, it was given to us by a veteran.
Yeah, yeah, the veterans group, actually, they were a Civil War group that donated that to the city. And as you know, it's one of the few Civil War cannons that have survived and are out here in the West, so.
Well, that's why I'm worried about it.
Yeah, well, and yeah, I mean, Bruce Bell asked, are we going to do a restore every, you know, every ten or fifteen years? So you're, it's a good point.
Kate, your thoughts? So Lisa's point, the memorials next to it, the two memorial walls, I think that those would be appropriately moved to Veterans Park. I would have to say that the one thing about the cannon, the cannon was placed in that spot, in that direction, I think very deliberately. There's a photo in the library of that placement and that day.
Oh, yeah, they placed it on purpose, definitely.
Yeah, so I would have a hard time moving that because of the, I think, with the statement that it was making. But that being said, I always think open space and honoring our soldiers is very important, so.
All right, well, Danny, it sounds unanimous, we would like to discuss this further at work session and really give it the time that is justified. With some more detailed discussions on this.
Is it fair for me to go now to the Masonic Lodge and say, yeah, the city council is generally supportive in concept and?
Yeah, well, and, you know, we have been pretty good about digging up particularly smaller grants. It's going to be a real challenge on moving forward for the city on some of these larger grants.
Well, I think, I just got that artist's rendering this weekend, and I started making calls, I talked to a couple of people at the reunion on Saturday. And that's where I came up with the five thousand from the last one we gave out, so.
Wow, all right, well, that was, that was great, five thousand.
And there, I doubt if you guys at the Masonic Lodge have given me forty reasons why this doesn't work and why it's still a problem.
Of course.
But I choose to work with the people that say, that's a good idea, let's make it happen.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, very much.
Appreciate it. Next up, we get a parking plan update, and Andy, are you kicking this one?
I'll kick it off. Mayor and council, we did talk about the parking, updating the parking plan in our last work session in a fair amount of detail. You have in your packet the markups that show the changes. The basic changes are moving our managed parking program from mainly downtown-focused to citywide-focused. So it's, the elements of the park managed parking plan are the paid parking program, which is in our Business District. But then our residential permit parking, which protects residential parking around the Business District. But with the, with the mountain park developing, and with more activity on the east end and some more attention on the west end with parking. We feel it really needs to be a citywide program. So we do have a renewed contract with Interstate Parking to manage the parking. And a big part of that updated contract and renewed contract was moving towards a citywide managed parking program. So this would extend paid parking along the Colorado Boulevard corridor. It would implement residential permit parking on either side of Safeway in the residential areas there. We already have it on the west side, on the east side. We already have it on Riverside Drive, and then it would extend residential permit parking west of Tenth Avenue and Eighth Avenue all the way to the west end of town. So this would be phased in, but we wanted to make sure we updated the city's parking plan. We've had this parking plan in place for decades, and this is what regulates all kinds of things with the parking that we enforce in the city. So the reason I wanted to bring it back to the work session, even though we had direction from council to move forward with it. There are two areas that I wanted to update you on before we finalize it, I hope, at our next city council meeting on the eleventh of August. And I added a section sixteen, which is right at the end, and this is actually from Sadie, working with, in conversation with Interstate Parking. To offer a discount partnership program. I don't think Sadie's here, she.
I did not answer.
So I'll cover this, it's fairly brief. A discount partnership program, businesses can opt into a discount program and display a branded participating in parking discounts decal in their window using the new Visit Idaho Springs branding. Of course, it ties into the city's effort to have a brand, to market itself, particularly trying to get visitors when it's not as busy here in town. So discounts are determined by the businesses, for instance, a dollar off, five dollars off. The Park Idaho Springs app and the city promotion will highlight participating locations. Customers can look for the icon and receive exclusive in-store discounts by showing proof they paid for parking. Examples show us your parking receipt and get three dollars off your purchase. So it's something that the businesses have, have had, some of the businesses have expressed interest in. It's something that can be accommodated by Interstate Parking, and it's supported by the recently formed Business and Community Promotion Board. So we did want to ask council if they would consider adding this section, this last section, about discount partnership program.
And Andy, I'm going to apologize, I don't know how much earlier I had seen this, but I know Sadie had shared this in an earlier communication. I thought it was a good idea myself, but I'm not sure if all of council had a chance to.
We talked about it at the work session, sorry, last work session. Our focus was, this needs to be something that the businesses manage, that we are not managing.
Right, right. Yeah, that's a completely voluntary opt-in, whatever level, you know, we, yeah, we leave that to the businesses. So Janine, I'll start with you, would it be all right with you if we added that as an option? All right. Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. And Scott? Jeremy? All right.
And the other section is an update to section eleven, particularly concerning oversized vehicle parking. There are times that oversized vehicle parking can be problematic, and historically, we haven't had a lot of options where oversized vehicles can park. Sometimes when there's a couple of oversized spaces down by the visitor center, those are filled, and you could just park along Colorado Boulevard. But as we know, we're seeing a lot more activity on Colorado Boulevard, on the East Colorado Boulevard. And so staff, we were talking about the need for maybe a few more designated oversized spots. We, for a long time, there were oversized spots that were designated by the, what we call the bus tang recreation center lot on Idaho Street going eastbound. But now we're getting regular bus service with Pegasus and Bus Tang and Greyhound. And that, sometimes a couple buses at a time will pull up there, will go around the block, and then they'll pull up there along the parking lot and pick up and drop off and then move on. So that's really not an area that can be for oversized vehicles, that is now a bus stop and a very active bus stop. So that's, it's been so designated. And then we only have those other three spots, we added one spot down by the visitor center. So Dylan put together a memo here to talk about oversized parking. And then one other idea, we wanted to, really not part of the parking plan, but we just wanted you all to be thinking about as we're talking about parking plan and future updates to it. Because we do need to get this plan updated so Interstate Parking can move forward with expanding the managed parking program. But we did want to see if you liked this idea of adding more oversized parking spots. In this case, over in the one oh three parking lot, the city parking lot across from the new Carlson, newly located Carlson, relocated Carlson Elementary. And then there's one other idea that we want to talk with you about. So if we get some direction on the oversized parking, we'll get this buttoned up into you for consideration of approval at our next meeting, and I'll turn it over to Dylan.
I think the staff memo probably talks about the oversized parking feasibility somewhat clearly in that we have to eventually restripe it, but potentially that could be a spot where you wouldn't lose that many day-use spaces for small vehicles, but you could get maybe up to ten oversized spaces formally, we have to restripe. But it seems like a decent spot to direct large vehicles because it's still walkable downtown, but it's more out of the way, and you won't have large vehicles navigating small city streets. I think, it might not be, I think we recently restriped it, so this year we may not be able to really just go and restripe it again. But maybe for next time it is restripped, I think there's enough spots now, someone could still park there, just without it being properly striped. There's a few spaces, but long-term, it might be a good place to direct those folks. And with the Mobility Hub, we talked about it with HDR, and they said that they want with the Mobility Hub to have a oversized vehicle drop-off location for tour buses and rafting and things like that, downtown school buses. And so with wayfinding, you could have them have a drop-off spot downtown and then go park and wait over there rather than at Sierra Sea Park or somewhere else. So I think that would be my first.
I think it's a great idea. And keeping the big rigs out of town is a great, great idea.
Yeah.
And, you know, as we do more wayfinding, it will be easier to direct them there right up the highway.
Yeah, I actually was in there this weekend, and I hundred percent agree. There absolutely are more spots that could be added there. We hadn't pushed it, you know, in years past, it had always been sufficient. But if we were to, say, take two spots out, I'm talking lengthwise for oversized. As you pointed out in your report, I think in the end, we wouldn't lose that many spots. You know, if we added some of these low-hanging fruit ones that are pretty obvious over there, you could definitely have them there. And Scott, your thoughts? Jeremy? Janine? Lisa? Lisa?
I prefer to keep it bigger for these added downtown.
And I, I also uh, Kate, I, I think you were the first to speak up here for it.
Yes.
And I had had a complaint that there were some bike rider folks uh, parking clear down at the eight hundred block of Colorado Boulevard. So I went looking for them this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I, I didn't find any, not that they hadn't done in the past, but I didn't find any. But I did notice some of these oversized vehicles. They couldn't find a place to park. And they were along I seventy here where there are no parking spaces, just to try to find a place to fit in. So I, I, I did see this with my own eyes. On our, our busier days, there's just nowhere for them to go overflow-wise, so.
It'd be easier if we can do wayfinding and give them
Yeah.
Clear direction on where to go.
Exactly. Yeah. So thank you for bringing this up.
Okay. Yeah. And then the second topic I think is probably uh, obviously at this point, I just, I wanted to say, is this worth looking into at all? Basically, there's been a few uh, formal discussions about event and theater space, live music, venues, things like that, like uh, eventually Carlson. Um, that ended up not happening, but there's a goal that I've heard multiple times of having events that keep things open downtown long period of time. Um, the problem with that is our current parking requirements for that would basically say you need to provide off-street parking, one space per four occupants. And that, at least in the downtown area, I don't a fee in lieu for, let's say fifty parking spaces or two hundred seat theater would be a million dollars, which I think would probably make it infeasible for anyone to actually create a large theater space, or even a small theater space for shows and people that can, and the like. So um, it might work in other parts of the city, of course, but um, my thought was typically theaters are the sort of use that you know, is maybe three hours a day or two hours a day or a couple of times a week because they don't have shows every night. Some people will. And it's normally during our quieter periods. So is there a way to allow a use that gets more people to an event like a local show, um, theater, those sorts of things? But would not require them to pay million dollars in fee in lieu. And so I, I really just threw together a couple of like, maybe there's a few ways to do it. Maybe you charge per event, maybe you charge. And so that ends up paying into the parking fund. And that way, instead of providing the spaces, uh, maybe they have to do some sort of updated special event permit. Maybe there's a modified fee in lieu where we can figure out a way to make them this pay perpetuity, but the per month cost is lower. Um, but in, you know, if it's successful over, let's say twenty-five years, maybe more than that fee in lieu amount. And so I didn't look into any of these at all. And if an event were to occur on a busy weekend, it probably would exacerbate the parking issue. So maybe is not a good idea. But given that there is a goal maybe to get more events and theater and those sorts of things to keep businesses open longer because there's more people around, is, is it worth considering? With society commission.
So I've been thinking about the parking thing a little bit and especially since the last starting meeting. And um, my concern about this is that there's really only one venue that we're specifically talking about. So let's just cut to the chase.
For now, yeah.
For now. Um, but first of all, even if the show starts at seven, you're gonna have that overlap of parking issues and that's gonna really exacerbate the issues downtown. And then if we're giving allowances to this particular business, because it is gonna be one business to start off with, then are there other venues in town that are gonna also say, hey, you've done this, now we want this over here? And then already have already heard that since we are offering possibly businesses on the east end of town to have exactly what they have down here where they can go into the right away of the city property. That anybody that owns property in front of, I mean, every, anybody that owns property in town immediately declares, these are my parking spots. So I think we're batting, backing ourselves into a very tiny little corner. And I bet you, everybody in the audience and everybody a little tiny in the springs would say, hell yeah, I want that. So I just wanna be very clear that we don't get into that corner because we can only give so many accommodations before we really run out of things that we can accommodate. That's my, that's my sense.
Alright, uh, Jeremy, your thoughts?
Well, we saw it from paper mobility hub, so we're lucky to give you discounts at all personally.
Scott? And Janine?
Yeah, they have still processing. I don't have a strong feeling either way right now.
And Lisa?
We worked really hard. I was on planning commission when we did the fee in lieu. That was a, that was a long discussion.
Yeah.
Um, on managing fee in lieu. And I think fee in lieu was a good way to allow people to have businesses that cannot provide the parking. You know, I mean, I, I understand. And Kate's right, it's one business now, but if we do this, you know, what's to stop other businesses from wanting the same consideration? And I, I struggle with that. I mean, I like to be accommodating to the businesses, but we are limited in space. It's that simple. Even once we build the mobility hub, we will still be limited in space. I, this makes me very uneasy. I think you articulated that, Kate, but this made me very uneasy. I'm feeling very strongly.
Lisa, no, uh, I did not get my way with the fee in lieu. Uh, I have been very concerned that a business could buy a space essentially for perpetuity at twenty thousand dollars. Then a mobility hub, it costs you at least sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars.
There's still problems with the fee in lieu when you look at renters versus the business, the building owner. We saw that already with uh, one of the fee in use. So I, I, I find challenges with the fee in lieu, but I feel like that was a compromise. And I was more in it for the residential versus the business, but you can't say, oh, we're gonna help residential, but the heck with the business like that. That's not appropriate.
Do, well, I'm, Dylan, I'm glad you brought this up and I think it is something that we should explore uh, and devote a work session to this.
Sure. I think, I mean, the direction at least initially is pretty clear. I, my only follow-up question was, given the discussion on fee in lieu generally, there wasn't, it's like last year, early on when I came on board, early twenty twenty-four, there was talk about revisiting it. And I don't know that that ever happened.
We can really do that.
And I don't know if we want to do that to make it function maybe more efficiently or.
Well, well, one question is whether it's citywide and not just downtown, am I correct?
That, that was a question early on and Nick was looking into it and then it kind of fell off the table was potentially expanding it to other areas. Um.
Tell how much people wanna talk about it.
Yeah, that's fair.
Really enthusiastic.
And, and truth be told, for a theater venue, I don't know that we'd actually approve of it. I don't really, like, I don't know that it meets the criteria anyway, so. Um, you know, I think the direction is very fair.
I mean, in that case, if you're buying a theater ticket and you're going to a concert, you kind of can pay for the parking in the theater ticket. It kind of just like, I get a ticket. I mean, like, I don't know what all the taxes and fees are for. The parking can just be in there. So that particular business asking for consideration seems, first of all, cart before the horse again. And we're, we're not quite there yet. Let's, we haven't settled the fires that are burning right now. And now it's like, we've just started a bonfire. So I'm like, I don't I don't think I'm ready for that marshmallow dust.
I mean, certainly it was the one business that started it, though I did think like, pardon, if they had been able to build the CCCAE in the Carlson, they wouldn't have had enough parking there either. Yeah.
But they would have had a shot at it at Lisa Carl, at the old Carl, the, whatever it is now. That went over there.
The new Carlson, yeah.
The new Carlson, the new old.
Yeah, they were about.
No, I, I, I was on the commission that was like talking about that. And I, I was like, where are you gonna put the parking?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Where are you gonna put the parking? And that question was never answered.
Alright, um, Dylan, uh, were there any other planning considerations? Uh, I don't think so. I think that's, I think the oversized. Keep working on it. And a, a big thank you for your last report, which you were not here, but that was very extensive. And I know we appreciate the community feedback that you had over several meetings. So good job. Alright, uh, next up, we'll talk about City Hall, the Ministry of Staff update. Uh, Guy, I think we're gonna go to you on this one?
Yep. Uh, I'm gonna start off real quickly, touch you on the, the last page of my report. And that's actually uh, this organizational chart. This is something I put together in the spring, just to kind of give a representation of how the city's organized. Still have some old positions. That's the best of brightest, but this gives you a good idea. Um, you have nine elected positions, twenty-seven appointed positions, six exempted positions, twelve non-exempt. Um, you're FTE, full-time equivalent, which is your exempt and non-exempt, about twenty-nine employees. And you're generally broken up into three operational areas. You have your law enforcement, police, have your public works, which is uh, above ground and below ground, what you're telling us. And then you have your administrative. And so we're gonna discuss the administrative in my report. Um, your city is growing and it's becoming more active. And so how the government interacts um, is also growing and is becoming more active. Um, in twenty twenty-four, there was a, a staffing analysis of administrative positions report that was conducted by our professional management solutions. And they came with a recommendation to create a position, uh, it was a management analyst position. Um, this uh, city went ahead and filled the assistant city administrative position instead, of which I am terribly grateful. Thank you. Um, but it didn't necessarily solve some of the issues that were recognized in the report. And so what I'm proposing and what this uh, report goes through is actually create a new position called the Director of Administration uh, that will serve as the city's deputy clerk. Um, and the professional management solutions analysis, um, it had a focus on improving internal controls through division responsibilities, clarifying supervisory roles, eliminating, eliminating inefficiencies and redistributing workload for overburdened staff. Um, that is in this new model. It accomplishes everything that was set out in that report. And those are real issues, um, that in my seven months I've seen here. So you have page two, uh, the first thematic is uh, how it's early organized, the administrative wing. Uh, so you have the assistant city administrator. You have four direct reports uh, to that position, the city planner, deputy clerk, deputy treasurer, and the administrative assistant. Um, for those in the audience, the, they're called deputy clerk and deputy treasurer. Those positions, as many of you know, are elected positions. These are actually the functioning administrative positions, um, that have been created by the city council. The proposed structure um, would put a director of administration uh, below the assistant city administrator. And the assistant city uh, clerk and court clerk, deputy treasurer, and the administrative assistant will report directly to that position. Um, so how would these roles now be broken up? Um, the director of administration, the deputy clerk would become basically the city's clerk of record. Um, and this, they would have the direct supervision of the assistant clerk, the deputy treasurer, and the administrative assistant. Um, and they would ensure the effective discharge of all clerical, financial and court-related functions with special emphasis on cross-training, compliance, customer service, internal controls and technology. Um, this would also include human resources, grant management, and special projects along with focusing on communications and outreach such as the newsletter, website, social media, and so on and so forth. Those, a lot of those things are getting short shifted right now, um, or lost in the fact that you have minimal bandwidth uh, in your administrative side.
Can I ask a question? I'm trying to think how to say this nicely. Um, so the two elected positions that this position would oversee.
They would not see. Go ahead with your question. I'm sorry. Let me.
Wouldn't it be easier to go back to the, the um, taxpayers and the voters and just ask them to eliminate that? And then we could clean it up from there? Because honestly, the, the, nobody in this room knows the history. We, we created those positions, hireable positions for those elected positions because those positions held by the people that were elected, they were not doing their job. So we actually had to go out and find a, but we had a byway around it, which I don't, I'm not proud to say that I was involved with. There was absolutely no other recourse for us to make them do their job. That was it. So to me, it feels like it's time to go back to the voters and say, hey, this is what's going on. And now we're gonna have to hire somebody else to kind of oversee this, this group of people and pay more money. So why don't we try not to do that and just clean it up after there?
I'm with you a hundred percent. We already have a clerk and treasurer. Now we're gonna have a deputy, we're gonna have a deputy clerk, uh, an assistant clerk, and a deputy treasurer. Why do we have those elected positions? Is there some way?
It's just symbolic at this point in time, honestly. It's absolutely.
Is there someone who can just?
They're signatories.
They're signatories, that's it.
That's all they are.
But can we not make them signatories if they're hireable?
So to, to answer your question, I would recommend this administrative structure, even if you went to having the voters get rid of that structure that's.
That's fine. I, I understand. I see where you're coming from, but.
So uh, because you're running into just more day-to-day things where you're not having, and, and let me get into this a little further and go through kind of the alignment part two, and that may help as well.
But I think we can just say that this is exactly what people hate about government, when you start that multi-layer of these things and you have people that are just, I'm, that's, I'll say ineffective, not doing anything, but just being there symbolically. So this to me would represent us cleaning ourselves up and, and making just much neater for the staff.
I agree. Um, it is, but it, it, and this is not the only community that's.
Oh, no, I, I absolutely, I know that it's, you know, we, we, we copied other people.
Well, in back of the day, the state legislature said, hey, we need to make sure there's a clerk and all the money's taken care of. And they, they handle it that way. This is, what you guys did was kind of, lack, lack of better term, professionalize the staff.
Hmm.
Um, so that's what they focused on day-to-day. Uh, because you went your hiring pool from registered voters to anybody who wanted to open a job, right?
Exactly.
So if you went, if you got rid of that system and the the, the clerk and the treasurer position is elected positions, I would still have this management structure.
Sure.
Alright. Um, so you would have your director of administration that would actually ask the clerk of record, basically. It'd be the closest person to the boards and commissions, would staff them, would oversee everything. You would have an assistant clerk position, which would uh, in their emphasis, um, they would be responsible largely for licensing and permitting, uh, because that is something that's growing and uh, doing more. But they would also then pick up the court clerk operations. Because right now, your court clerk is in your finance department. So there's a couple of reasons we wanna look at that. Um, and I'll get into that. Your deputy treasurer now just focuses on the financial, healthy organization. There is no part-time doing court clerk, part-time doing finance. Is finance and then has oversight over in um, utility and utility billing to a large extent. So that finances are aligned in finances, clerk duties are aligned in clerk duties. Then you have an administrative assistant who helps all of them, supports all of them. But the administrative assistant position also helps do the separation of duties. So for instance, you have them taking in money, but then you have somebody else counting. And that's what you're gonna see in your audit. And that's what you saw in this report last year. And that's what you see in municipalities across everyone. Is you're trying to get that separation of duties. Um, but let's consider that we're hiring a treasurer position under the current status, right? Right now, if you're hiring, you'll be looking for somebody who could do court and treasurer. By and large, those are two separate disciplines as you go through the ranks and working for a small government. Um, so somebody who's got their CMC, it's, it's their clerk, municipal clerk uh, designation, doesn't necessarily do finance and vice versa. Now here, it, it's kind of worked, but in the future, if you have, you're more likely to find a clerk who's been a court clerk and a deputy clerk than you are to find a treasurer who's done court. Right? So you're kind of lining yourself up for the future as well. So basically, this new structure concentrates the administrative leadership under a single, clearly defined managerial role, the director of administration, who is responsible for the performance and coordination of all administrative services. It creates bandwidth to get more aggressive with HR, get more aggressive on grant management, um, to get somebody who is dedicated to office technology and those types of things. Uh, it um, creates emphasis uh, in areas of focus and expertise instead of um, kind of this hodgepodge that you have now, which by the way, you kind of slid into this. You had COVID and you had some personnel issues and, and all those things and that happens. And that's where we got here. Um, but it is not as efficient as it should be and it is very hard from my position to fully manage this on a day-to-day basis when I'm also doing everything that's on the plane of the assistant city administrator. doing everything that's on the plane of the assistant city administrator.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you're not reinventing the wheel here. Lorraine Trotter also had something similar, and she felt, as she helps many, many cities with this and saw some real misalignments here in the city. We had staff pass away, we went through COVID, and as a result, we ended up with a series of Band-Aids. So anyways, I also want to point out that in your career as a county manager and a city administrator with other cities, you also have seen different alignment that worked a lot smoother.
It's just, it's easier to train, it's easier to recruit. And it ends up being a smoother operation. These are administrative functions. And while they are repetitive, they have to be done absolutely accurately. And so allowing focus and concentration in one area instead of shifting back and forth. And then, you know, when you get to court date, you have enough people there, they all kind of come together and you do court, or whatever may be the off issue, and then they go back to their disciplines. You're not gonna get less busy in this city. That's a fact. I think we all see that. You least touch on that, of works touches on that, but your administration touches on that. So wanting feedback, and if this is something you'd like to move forward with, we will be coming back with four new job descriptions that will represent what we have outlined here.
Yeah, I mean, I think this makes sense, the efficiencies. I just wanna like be mindful that there's humans in those roles whose jobs are going to change, and if you want to keep them, making sure they're communicated with, along for the ride, invested, consulted, all of that, because yeah, like what they have been doing seems like it's going to be very different, but I agree, it seems a lot inefficient. And then, yeah, going back to that, the analysis from two thousand and twenty-four, I remember when we were talking about the assistant city administrator job description being like, there's so much in there and it's a lot. So I acknowledge, like, there's a lot of work in adding another position can help manage that. In all fairness, when we're talking about efficiencies, I'm not sure the difference in your job descriptions and division of duties. So just maybe and ask if we're looking at things, I'm just curious, like, how work is divided on that level as well.
I think that's a great point, Janine. I think actually all of the jobs should have a description. If you're gonna create new descriptions before, let's see what it looks like. And then, I think, not that we want to micromanage, but then at least we can actually see the connectivity between the different jobs. Is that kind of where you're going?
Yeah, just like, there's always like, oh my gosh, there's so much on this, like, just knowing like how it's actually divided among the, yeah, the.
The workloads and stuff.
The workloads and like what specific project, because yeah, like the management of the admin staff and the way it was written was in your job description, so that's going away. So what is that? I don't know. Yeah, like, what does that just like look like?
I actually have, I like this. I was very strong for the survey that we did because I don't feel, I haven't felt that our, like, I feel like the blending of so many responsibilities on one person, but they had a couple different roles. I didn't think that was very fair or appropriate. I think this cleans it up. But I'm with Kate, though. I think if we're gonna do this, we also need to address the elected things. If you guys remember in the two thousand and twenty-three election, I was appalled when you looked at city clerk, city treasurer, and they didn't even have fifty people that voted for both offices. So if there are people that are concerned about that, it is not the majority of our voting population. Like, that's, I think one of them had seven votes. That's awful. And to me, it's redundant if we're gonna do things like this.
Okay, so it is. Jeremy, have your thoughts?
I do support getting rid of the elected positions, but I supported that for a long time. That goes back way longer than.
Thirty years, forty years.
But, yeah, when you start doing jobs, Wander is currently in a role that's amazing, but she's, you know she's overworked. We've got the data that shows she's overworked. And it has to overflow in other positions on a regular basis. To the point that I guarantee you're picking up the slack when you have it really, that's how it works, right? We all know. So, yeah, doing four job descriptions and looking at that, taking a really good look at what that looks like in the future. Definitely in our best interest, but someone leaves, they don't want to recruit somebody that can do the job.
Well, I think it tells, it's very telling, too, that last month, Wander said they did thirteen hundred phone calls.
Yeah.
Like, we need to have very defined lines of where people go. People are getting that much public interaction on a monthly basis.
It makes it better for the public, too, right? People come to the city hall to get something done, and we're more efficient, they spend less time trying to get it done what they needed it done.
Or figuring out who they need to talk to.
Well, if we have a finance person who just deals with the utility billing.
Single point of contact, people calling, they're having.
Yes.
That would be a viable idea.
Scott, your thoughts?
I'm good with this, just a clear definition of rules for everybody, I think is a very important thing. And defining how it all enters.
I feel the same way.
You're sure, every direction.
All right.
Just to recap, the next step would be to bring back draft, updated job descriptions plus the new proposed job description for the administrative supervisor or director.
Yep.
And that would probably be at our next meeting, and then we can have discussion there and then get those about the.
All right, yes, that sounds good. Next up, I was looking around, just, oh, hey, Ed, how are you doing?
Good.
Speaking of where we didn't have anything further on administrative updates.
I think that was it.
Okay, all right. Len, welcome, welcome. And, man, you got a, you got a kind of a list.
I do, yeah, I have all kinds of stuff that are going on.
All right, but what we've done is we've finally figured out what to do with the Idaho Street back.
Yes.
You're welcome.
So what we've got here, I'll swing the map.
The neighborhood building is next to.
Four points.
Five, four points.
Yeah.
Five points?
The change of name?
Yeah.
The green lines are existing mains and services. The red, the dark red, is the line that four points had installed for their buildings. And the orange is proposed to break up and have everyone on the new main and get away from this old, the old, the old main, the grocery world. It's made of clay and steel and plastic and trinsing of everything. And there's plenty of offsets and places where songs can get hooked up and big clubs. It's been quite a struggle finding someone that that would bid on it. One, because partially the space that there is to work in and the restriction of the timeline that four points is under, because they're doing the paving, and we kind of have to work as a team. But we did get everything labeled, and we did finally get a bid that we'll be voting on later tonight. It's kind of expensive, but it does check all the boxes and gets everybody, at least in the section where we're paving, out having a new line, so we won't have to tear up new asphalt. If there's anything further that we want to do, then we can address that later.
It's what we did with Colorado Boulevard, essentially, right? We kind of consulted any of it in.
Yeah, because, you know, you tear into new asphalt, you're essentially having the life. And we knew that this has been a rat's nest forever, as Ed pointed out, you know, with just potential for where's your next blog? And I feel like you need a crystal ball. So at least that'll be straightened out once and for all. And we'll never doubt it anymore before the pavement goes in.
And this is the one to Apex underground, Ed?
Yes. He had some. I highlighted the ones, I highlighted the ones that are on the addresses here on Idaho.
Sixty-four thousand.
I didn't think that was.
You said that's pretty expensive. I was like, um, looking at my last plumbing estimate, I was like, that's not that expensive.
Right. We did have a quote earlier that while Paul was here, of like forty-six hundred bucks per service. As it turns out, we only did, they were only gonna dig the sliding drill, and if they hit something, they charge us forty-six hundred bucks a day.
They weren't gonna go fishing.
Right. In this particular stretch here, there's only one of those.
One of those maybes.
One of those forty-six hundred dollar charges. So the money that we thought we were gonna spend there of being like six or seven services up, we're not gonna spend. You could say, you know, we don't have to spend some money if we're spending this other.
This is a little bit, yeah, I don't, I was like, that was, that was expensive. With the residents who have the challenges with the flowers, I'll be going to fix that after we finish that.
We're, I have some flowers that they can hand up.
And I think the contractor offered something up there as well.
I haven't heard anything, that's what I understand. It's a contractor offering.
Because I would like them to also be made fair. You know, after this, if we were on this timeline right now, I would like them to not be forgotten and made whole.
Oh, yes. Right. Well, I plan on like marking these out clearly underground, and then letting everyone know, or there's an email string with Kim and everybody that's on the street here. And being like, okay, I marked out these lines. There's probably, there could be some sections of fence that might have to come down. So if there's anything on here in the dig zone, let's try to move that, do what we can.
Better to have new lines to your house.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'm lost because I'm asking, yeah.
But this will stay this very long term, because the new main, we won't be paying staff, most of the staff overtime to go get. And due to, I wonder which one is plugged in, play a plus three years?
Yeah, I mean, I'm terrified of it.
I mean, money will spend from a, from a certain perspective, because the fixes are in, know it's correct.
Starting in two thousand and twenty-five.
The other forty problem right now.
One of the solves actually, we got some flood damage from us attempting to jet out the lines. And just the way they were connected, it wound up filling the baseline, I think it was in this ten nineteen.
Can I ask a question, quickly, from the audience? Chris, this has been directly affecting you for a long time. What's your opinion about spending money to fix this problem right?
I appreciate the city council's efforts to wow the patients on the table. Yeah, exactly. So I think all residents over there very much appreciate the city's proactive, thank you. The city's proactive attitude, remembering, you know, we're a very small space, a very small amount of people, but we appreciate the effort to get things right and then not worry about it. Because it is, like you mentioned, it's a piecework, it's jigsaw puzzle right now. Let's put the patient on the table, get it right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed.
And then item number two, before you move on. What's that? Before you move on?
Okay.
Are you done with that? About to go on the next item?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to give council a heads up that this new sewer main that's being constructed in the city streets here is part of the four-point project. Being constructed by four points for the project, it does give us some new sewer main, which is great. We're spending some money to get the homes connected, which is the right thing to do. Ed and I are going to come back to council in the very near future to talk about Minor Street, the sewer line, as you can see at the top, that goes west in front of the buildings there, and there are several homes, at least several homes, that need to be connected to the sewer main there, and there's some things we're working through related to that. And we'd also maybe something we want to recommend to council about the sewer, the water main in there as well. But just giving you a heads up that it's one of those things that, just like with Idaho Street, we try to plan these things, we try to budget these things, but this is a time when the street is torn up that I think we need to have a little more discussion, just like we did with the I know, about how to, when we get minor rebuilt as part of this four-point project, that we also do the infrastructure the way it really needs to be done. So we'll bring that back to the council in upcoming work session, but I just want to give you a heads up on that.
If I may, I think we all kind of knew that this was gonna be an infrastructure, coalitions, and nature here, like, it's just that here.
Kind of go first, you get it right now.
Yes.
At a lower cost and fix, I think all this is water main issues, too, there was, and stuff can get fixed as part of this. Again, I'll, I'll just uncall them and move on, and the other things will readjust our focus a little bit. So it's probably money well invested.
Oh, no, I'm not just, I'm not, I just, I personally have been like, all of our infrastructure is putting their hand up and saying, we need to accentuate this.
And unfortunately, I think we know next year is not gonna be a real.
Oh, no, next year's gonna be the pits as far as I'm concerned, too, but if we have stuff torn up, let's do it now while it's torn up and not pay to tear it up again.
Yeah, exactly.
You mentioned water and get, water and sewer, is there other infrastructure in that street or section that you're talking about?
I think it's mainly those two, right? There's just the water, the sewer main is in the street. The water is in minor and in eleven? All right. And then the second, the second item is the computers for the water and the wastewater treatment. Six hundred Gs, previously called VM SCADA. The new thing is now called VSOS. So the primary storage will be in the cloud, and then, so there won't be a server. All right, but they'll be, all the computers will be upgraded, Windows eleven, security system, Homeland Security safe, all of those things. So there's like a down payment, which is kind of like for the equipment, and then the monthly fee for each one, so there's a water and a wastewater.
Seven hundred bucks a month.
Yep.
How is that different from our old?
The old one, I think we, I couldn't find it, but there was a down payment for the equipment. But the old one was only like a couple thousand dollars for a five-year contract.
For both or just?
For each.
This is not huge.
Well, it doubled.
Well, we're kind of face the point that the technology uses for all of the systems is obsoleted by its own Windows ten, right? And there are a whole bunch of security issues that have to be addressed, all part of this. Because at the end of the day, whether we spend the money or we say, no, we're good, we're gonna win it, it's really hard to say, hey, we're really sorry, you can't use water, water or wastewater for two weeks because now we're trying to invest in a computer system that we would have bought last year. And everything is PLCs. The whole computers make the world work for him. So we need to be ahead of it rather than behind it.
Right. It also allows us to communicate between the tanks and the meters and the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And like, saving us a lot of time of having to run up and check and look at things when we can just in seconds, check, 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 check. I couldn't imagine doing this, the water, all the wastewater treatment stuff without the computer. And do it just take forever? To manually go around and check every single thing that the computer does.
Why are you in here?
Any further on those?
This is one of those musts.
No, that's it, just kidding. But before Ed is done, I just want to make sure, council, you didn't have any further questions, Fred, regarding other these matters? Ed, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate that. Good updates?
I try to keep it as clear as possible.
Well, we appreciate that.
You can certainly get the leads with either one of those subchecks.
Yeah. So that brings us to our last item, and that is the refurbished coach.
I did, but the budget schedule?
Oh, that was a for you slip.
I've got to say, same thing.
But you did include it in our package.
Yes.
Of all of the dates.
Yes.
Which I know were eagerly awaited.
Yes.
Yes.
Couple items I want to mention to you. First, before we get into the budget preparation schedule, I do want to mention to you that we got a really early start on our two thousand and twenty-four audit this year. And our auditor that.
And, uh, our auditor, the, uh, our auditors who we have had for a number of years, they do a very good job for us. Uh, Lorraine works closely with them, they work for a number of other small communities. Uh, the lead auditors had some health issues, they had a significant health incident last year. And then, uh, this year it has affected in finishing, uh, the audit. They do have a final draft of the audit for twenty twenty-four. Um, but it's not gonna be ready by the deadline, uh, state deadline of July thirty-first. So I am asking the mayor to, um, approve an extension. Uh, we can get up to a two-month extension. I don't think we'll need anywhere near two months to get it done, from what I understand from Lorraine and the auditor. But, uh, it's the final draft and what happens, we get the final independent audit. Uh, it comes back to the city for review. Our finance officer, uh, Lorraine, will do the primary review of that. Uh, she, uh, checks for any, um, anything that doesn't quite look right or ask questions. And then we also, uh, jointly prepare the, the management analysis of, that goes into the audit. And that's an integral part of it, that's the, the narrative at the beginning, that's what most people will read. And, and sometimes they'll not necessarily get into all the details of the numbers. But it, I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's, uh, the situation, um, as we normally do with our audits. We will have the final audit, which will be brought back to council for a presentation. Uh, the auditor will make, uh, the initial, uh, presentation of the audit. And then, uh, Lorraine Trotter, our finance officer, will then, uh, do a deeper dive into the audit. So I just wanted to give you an update on that right off the bat. I just found this out today, that they're just not gonna be able to get it done by the July thirty-first deadline, but we're very close. Um, looking forward, uh, the budget, the preparation schedule for the budget for twenty twenty-six. Um, we, this is the calendar that we, uh, introduced to kick off the budget preparation process. Uh, the week of August fourth, the budget worksheets will be distributed to the department heads. And that looks very similar to the budget that, uh, you all work with, that you're familiar with. You have the last, uh, couple of years, uh, actual numbers. Uh, then what the departments believe will, they, they, where they will land with their, uh, each of their line items. Um, that's important for budgeting in the new year. And then, uh, what their request is for twenty twenty-six. So you have about six or seven columns there. So they will, uh, prepare those in an Excel spreadsheet. Uh, those will come back to me and then the mayor and I will meet with each department to go over those budget requests, do the initial review of those budget requests. Um, and then we will come back to council, uh, with each department making a presentation to council. And, uh, so that will happen towards the end of September, when we will have, uh, the initial draft of the budget put together. And then our, uh, proposed twenty twenty-six budget is due by statute to council by October fifteenth. So that's when you'll have a good proposed document, that's not final, but it is a, a, a good, um, final draft of the proposed budget. Then we'll probably have one more work session, maybe early November, talking about any final details with the budget before it is approved by council on Monday, December eighth. Uh, that's when the legislature hearing and the resolutions to approve the budget for twenty twenty-six and also the certification of the mill levy. And then after that, we notify the commissioners of the mill levy that was certified in the city. And then also file our approved budget with Department of Local Affairs. So this is very similar to the past year's, uh, format. We likely, we will have at least one extra work session, so I just wanna give you a heads up on that. Uh, proposing that at the end of September, that'll be a work session that's just dedicated, uh, to the budget. And we might need to have another one. I'll try to, uh, put some of that work into our, uh, regular meeting nights when we have a work session before. So you don't get overloaded with meetings, but just wanted to give you a heads up of what, what it looks like going forward.
All right. Any questions, uh, about our budget schedule?
I also heard you.
I know.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll keep the clock in. Um, Andy, one last item.
Yes.
And that is the refurbished coach.
And this is a celebration, uh, mayor and council, that the train coach that's behind our locomotive out here, usually it's behind our locomotive, it has been over the last couple of years restored up at the Georgetown Loop by the talented staff there, both their pay staff and their volunteers. And, um, they would, uh, like to run it up there, uh, and have an excursion with, uh, mayor and council. And I talked with the mayor about this, maybe inviting our other boards and commissions to be a part of that, and maybe some other guests as you desire. Uh, the date we're looking at is Monday, September fifteenth, probably at five thirty. And, uh, we make it a, uh, we have the, the, um, talking to Mark Grable, what we would do is we have the restored coach, which would be hooked to the train. And then we have maybe, uh, I guess it's a type of dining car where we can add food and drink. And then I suggested maybe we have the open car, that, I think they have an open, uh, car as well. And we'll see how many folks we have and how many, uh, get signed up, but make it a bit of a, a celebration. So, uh, this is, this is a big deal. We've invested a lot of money into restoring the coach as we should. Uh, it looks great. You've periodically seen pictures when it was all the way stripped down to the frame and then how it's all been built back. Uh, Mark's very excited about it. So I just wanted to run this date by you. It's, it's an off week for us as, uh, for council meeting. And, uh, I thought that might work well. It works well with them. It's before leaf peeping season where they get a little busier. And summer's really busy for them and this is kind of, they thought this might be good timing wise. So, um, my thought was that we invite all of our boards and commissions and, uh, perhaps they could bring a guest as well. They have a hundred, uh, maximum they could accommodate. So there is, there is a limit to how many, so we have to be a little, uh, thoughtful about that. But, um, if you all are good with that, I'll move forward with the plans and, and keep you informed. Uh, am I all right with that?
Yeah, sounds great.
All right.
I'm excited to see it. They've done beautiful work.
It's pretty cool.
That would be a.
It would be, uh, in Georgetown at the, at the depot there, the, you know, the train starts, the excursion started in Georgetown, go up to Silver Bloom and then come back. I think that's what the plan would be. We're still, I wanna make sure, check in with you all, make sure this, an idea of your live date works, and then we'll put some of the details together.
Andy, do we know if they would like, cause I know they had talked about wanting to keep it there for a little bit and run it there, because I know they don't wanna give it to us till we can cover it.
Well, um. Yes, um, and this is, this would be another work session item, but I do think we need to give some thought about interim condition for covering the train. We know that, you know, we had some design work done for a really nice, uh, train cover. And I think that would be wonderful to get, to have that as a goal, but it was very expensive. It was about one and a quarter million.
And I just wanna inject, uh, the prospects for grants next year are pretty.
Pretty slow.
Pretty sad.
Yeah. So just again, a little, a little heads up for what we're thinking, and we'll bring this back, is, uh, some type of temporary shelter. And I know that's not probably what we want long-term, but there are some very sturdy, uh, fairly attractive metal frame canvas, uh, roof shelters uh, and, and buildings, and you've probably seen them around, and I've been taking more note of them. I, I wanna look into that as a possibility for us getting the coach back sooner. And then also provide us cover for when we get the locomotive, uh, restored. Uh, I, one of our goals is to apply for a, um, state historic fund grant to help us with the restoration of the locomotive. And, and as I think we heard earlier here, I think it's from Mark Grable, is that his thought is that the locomotive, unlike the coach, which involves a lot of woodwork, stripping it down with the frame and building it back up. The work on the locomotive could, could most, could, could be done here, on site. And I think if we can find a way sooner rather than later to get a more affordable cover that looks halfway decent, get the train relocated off of the side, as we talked about, get the, get the metal frame with canvas cover over it. So it's still very visible, but it's covered and has some protection. I'm thinking that may be the way to go until eventually we can get a really nice train station, train cover that looks, uh, mimics the old train station that was in town here for many years. So that's kind of the thing, and we'll bring back more on that, but as well let you know, so the, that's a long way of answering your question. But I think the goal, of course, is to get it back here sooner rather than later. And the only way we're gonna get the, uh, coach back here sooner is by having a cover on it, and that's the only way we can really.
Because they were pretty clear when we did it for it, that they were not willing to hand that over to us, so it was not gonna sit out in the rain, you know, and the birds and all the things.
Is, is it possible for us to, to invite guests? I mean, trains do attract people and it is kind of a unique experience to ride that train and sort of try to raise money while it's there for the, for the covering?
Interesting thought. Um, I, I think that's certainly, I, I know there was some discussion about them running it for a period of time.
Oh, I know they really, really want to run it.
And, uh, the first thing we wanted to do is have a celebration.
Sure, yeah.
And to show it to, everybody's been very patient here at the city with getting it restored. Uh, I think that's still very much a possibility, subject to what we're comfortable with, but maybe certainly until we can find a solution for the cover.
Yeah, I think he also talked, like, could somebody rent it or could it be an event space or something? I don't know. Maybe not, but, but I don't know, something creative.
Like a tea thing out there, yeah, to raise money, like a, a train tea, whatever.
Yeah.
Something, it's a huge area, but, uh, you know, I've talked to Mike Corner quite often, um, in fact, he, he, he's just been involved with the guys up there. I mean, from what he says, they would be thrilled if they could run it, and we could kind of some sort of agreement where we pull out a certain amount of money and they still benefit. I mean, it's a draw for them as well. It's a, it's a thing that people love to go and see, so.
Maybe even a little bit of a fundraiser, what you're suggesting.
I have a hundred percent for us.
I, I think that might have the possibility.
That might, that might help us, you know, get our attractive temporary cover.
We could get some money in lieu of that, with that, right? Like in-kind grant, except for crazy money. I know there's no money, but whatever. It's something like it's two years ago.
Well, I do think that the state fund, cause it comes from the lottery, looks pretty good.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's not all league. It's not fire tonight, so.
So those are quite subject to the same.
All right, well, I wanna, uh, thank you. Uh, it is six fifty-two. Uh, somehow we are like eight minutes early. So, uh, everyone, please, uh, take eight, uh, for a comfort break and we will reconvene and have some camp for our radio.
When I moved to the town years ago, I remember a big protest then, and we're not about to like cut less than half.
And there's just so much going on in the place, so little like these, like little like people in your city are doing this and that. I could have conversations or something, just not shocked, not just randomly shocked, I mean, you know, like, no, which uh, these two little schools are out, but I never do.
I mean, every question is, you guys have fun?
It was, it was uh, it was an experience that I enjoyed myself.
I was like, you're a lot of fun to speak to.
I know, it was a good feeling, like, I think.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
No, I did. Yeah, we did already.
Yeah, I've been there. It's a long ride, it's two days.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, you should say, yeah, we retired, so.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't. Do you go to Marvel and stuff like that? Yeah. Okay, that's hard. Well, fun to stick. I should thank the bringing back Apple and Tracy. I love their apples so much. I had you. Good, you smell good.
Hey, no worries, bud.
Look at this. But not on that.
That's a picture.
I, I love. It's just a mattress, I don't know. I got, I got. And it's comfy. I know. I don't mind the, the space. I just like your chair out.
Folks, come on in, uh, please take your seats. And uh, are we, we good? Oh, Dylan, thank you.
Everything's gonna work, Barrett.
All right. Hello, I would like to welcome everybody to the July twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting for the city of Los Prays. Uh, we'll call the order seven oh four. And I'd like to start off the roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Here.
Lisa Manifol.
Here.
Chasten now.
Here.
Janine Mariani.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Here.
Mayor Puppin Jeremy Jones.
Here.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Here. Uh, all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Uh, we have an agenda before us tonight. Uh, do I have a motion? And uh, Jeremy, I'm gonna have to ask if you would consider amending your motion. Um, just because I would like to amend the agenda to include on the bills. Uh, the police department uh has one addition for the new police department.
Amending my motion to approve the uh, the new architecture bill.
Thank you, Jeremy, and do I have a second? Uh, a second from Lisa. And uh, any discussion of the agenda? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest? Uh, hearing none, I'll move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move through the minutes from July fourteen to twenty five.
Thank you, Janine, and do I have a second?
I did.
Uh, a second from Jimmy. Any discussion of the minutes? Uh, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we have bills before us tonight. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move through the bills from July twenty-eighth to twenty-five, including the bill from the police department to the new architecture.
Very good, thank you, Lisa, and uh, do I have a second? Uh, a second from Jeremy.
I do have a bill on that I remember a couple of days off.
All right, uh, we will note that you'll be recusing yourself of the, uh, the bill vote. Scott? Uh, any for, any discussion of the bills? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Mayor Puppin Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, I would like to move on to public comment and also an acknowledgement uh to the folks in the audience. Uh, our sincerest apologies, I uh, I truly had no idea uh, that you were here to talk about parking, so I am welcoming everyone who uh would, would like to do that uh, to take uh their time in public comment. Uh, I will tell you, it's three minutes, and please don't be offended if there isn't back and forth with council, normally there is not in public comment, it's our time to listen. And I already know there's some good ideas from folks in the audience that I think councils should hear about. Uh, and um, I would like to uh, uh, start out uh with Bonnie uh, from uh, two twenty-two tenth, please come on up.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, and uh, welcome, yes.
Can you just make it official?
Can you just say your name for the record, please?
Bonnie Reimer. Thank you. I find it two, 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 Tenth Avenue. I find it appalling that this apartment complex, their parking plan has been approved and passed and it is not a good plan. I don't know anybody that has a household with two drivers, and most households have two drivers, that has less than two cars. But they have only allocated a hundred and eighty parking spaces and potentially there will be a need for a minimum of two hundred and forty parking spaces by my math. And I just wonder where sixty people are gonna park. There's sixty additional people that are looking for parking spaces where there are none. And I think the first time I have to walk several blocks to carry my groceries home, not gonna be real happy. I don't have parking, I have a very small lot. I can't park the car in my yard. So I rely on street parking. And I have, I believe it's twenty-two feet in front of my property to park. And sixty people around me looking at that parking space because I live right there on Tenth Avenue. And I'd like to know if the city is going to address this in any way to perform. I know that it's been approved some time ago. But it's not right for people who don't have parking available on their property, where are they gonna park? And a lot of the lots in town are small and parking is very limited. And you've had some construction issues with neighbors getting a new roof and another neighbor getting a deck. And there's no parking left on the street. So, I'm unhappy about the situation, I don't know what the solution is, it should have been addressed before it was approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Uh, Liz from fourteen twenty-two Colorado Boulevard, uh, welcome, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, thank you for listening, my name is Elizabeth Liz Boulard, fourteen twenty-two Colorado Boulevard. I would like to just uh, uh, talk a little bit about uh, the risk of fire in this town. Insurances of houses have gone up, uh, so people can't pay their insurance anymore. Uh, the chances that we will have a fire in this town, by the statistics, is uh, by my insurance, twenty percent. It scares me, there's a lot of trees here with uh, you can see they're dying because of the beetle or whatever. So um, I, I know that the fire department is, is doing things, I'm sure you are doing things. Um, I am wondering if uh, there have been, has been brand lighting? And uh, I hope so, if not, can we write brands for this? I have no idea, can I help? Uh, and what can we do, uh, apart from what you are already doing as citizens of this town to maybe help prevent fires? Can we go out there, can we cut trees, can we hire people, can we pitch in money, I don't know. Because I gotta pitch in money now to prevent fire, then later on, then the whole town will do.
Liz, thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
And uh, Mrs. Daryl, please come on up.
Hi, I'm Lady Daryl, and I'm living on the two twenty-fourth Avenue. And um, most of this has been addressed already, but um, the issue is, this community was built in a horse and buggy. Many of us do not have driveways in the garage or so we have to come down the street. And we're getting older. And this happened to our daughter in the day, they had paid parking and she went to the grocery store and came home and sent it to the first spot. I mean, we don't have anybody, they, these people that are moving to these apartments, they don't have enough parking. One point, I don't know, a couple doesn't have two cars. So I don't know, one point five per unit, that's not gonna cover it. And they're gonna have to come out into our neighborhoods and park. And you know, we have to park on the street. And so this needs to be addressed, it's a serious problem. Um, and, let's see, I wrote um, could we get signs for residents? They are also residents, so I some way that we could have a space for parking in front of our homes. So, you know, you go out, you come home after dark and you don't have a place to park. Um, that is an issue. Uh, also, Virginia, I don't know, all who were around on the fifth, Virginia, on the fifth, on that Friday, and Virginia, we live on the corner of South and Virginia. Everybody gets up the interstate, they go down Colorado and they can't get through Colorado, so they'll go up on Virginia. I mean, it was a nightmare for hours, our neighbors couldn't get home after doctor's appointment. I mean, we're gonna do maybe make it one way, uh, maybe put up signs so they can come up on Virginia. And I don't know, it's a mess. We've had uh, a wall, rock wall, our neighbor had part of the rock wall knocked down, the camper, the guy tried to burn down our hill. And he hit the cement wall with his camper on the back. And he put a big hole dent in his camper, I felt so bad for him. But, and we aren't making a very cool I, I was talking about drinks for people, they were in the car for hours. I, I felt so bad for them, you know? We're gonna do something to make it better for these people that are coming through and for our residents. You know, they're coming through, what kind of a future, they're gonna get out of Snow Springs. That was where, you know, we had all this, I want them to enjoy it, spend their money, have fun, come back. And we're not presenting it that way, some of this. Okay, did I get it? Oh. Uh. Okay. I think that's it.
This is Daryl, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. It's an issue, and I love Los Prays, I want it to be a good place for all of us and the visitors.
Uh, next up, we have somebody from eighteen twenty-six Wall Street.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Hank Galmish. G A L M I S H, eighteen twenty-six Wall Street. I'm at the very end of Wall Street where it comes up against Virginia Canyon, so it's a dead end. And I just wanna double and repeat all the stuff on the parking, it's a serious problem. But up on Wall Street, in that whole area in Virginia now where they repaved it and they've done a really nice job there. Can we get some information out to the bicyclist who's ever in charge of that? On a weekend, I must get four or five people come up my driveway because they don't know where to take their bicycles. And they're looking all around, they stop there and they look it around and they block it. And to be honest with you, they're rude if you say anything to them. They're very, very rude. And that is not appropriate at all for people living in that area. Somebody who's ever in charge of the bicyclist in those trails, needs to give them the map. If they don't come up Wall Street and circle around, then go down Virginia and come around, they don't know how to get onto those trails. Somebody needs to give them some directions. Because if somebody in the neighborhood tries to give them directions, they get nasty. I don't know if anybody else has had that experience, but I watched the Facebook, and on Facebook there's a lot of people that say they've had that experience. You can't say anything businessy. Give them some directions, I don't know, I don't even know where they're supposed to get on the trails from. So that's one issue. The other thing, Mrs. Daryl, I can't believe it was about, maybe it was the fifth, one of those, but I know Siri or Google or one of those uh, MapQuest direction people were telling people when the interstate was closed and Colorado, you couldn't even get on it, why don't you take Virginia? And they were sending them onto Virginia. That's bizarre, this was odd, because Virginia is not set up there. Virginia got overwhelmed and then they were going onto Wall Street. If you know Wall Street from nineteenth to twenty-third, that's a dangerous, dangerous street anyways, it's so narrow. People come, they leave their door open when you're driving down, it's, it's not safe. And so I don't know how we get word to Siri or any of these uh, AI uh, directional people, but they can't be telling people to go onto Virginia when the interstate's closed, which is very common now, you know. And not only cars, but big trucks. I'd say then semis trying to go down Virginia, that's bizarre. Somebody's got, I don't know if the police or somebody's got to give some control over that, that, that street is not set up for semis, it is just not. And that's it.
And uh, perfect timing, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. And Al, please come on up.
You guys have a tough job.
Can you say your name and address for the record, please? Your name and address?
And I'll send it.
Yeah, I'll find it. 1244 Colorado Boulevard. For almost 50 years. I, I don't want to blow this joke, but I don't have the right to remain silent. But being Irish, I don't have the ability. I'm not here to talk so much about parking other than I think we really ought to look at parking up 103 by emergency cars from the Forest Service. Giving up a whole lot of parking lot spaces down here to gain fewer parking spots. And higher cost doesn't make sense to me. But I'm here to talk about traffic jams around about. We live at the corner of 12th. Watson Scott wherever it is. By the way, I think round, roundabouts the way to the future. I think there's going to be one at Minor Street. The plus is our, we save brakes, we save gasoline and less noise. I invite all of you to come sit on our porch sometime. Any day, when you hear the motorcycle with Popeye and others rapping their motors, that's pulling off the school. Better with my notes. We're going to save on brakes, gas and noise. I wish we had a noise ordinance, but I don't know if we can do that. Again, please come sit on our corner. On a Sunday evening, you'll see a traffic jam. Not only Colorado, but Virginia can talk about. Some options for parking. The city lot right out here could be better sign on the weekend. There's no staff here to keep using it. The hot springs up there is a short block. The school, the new school has a lot of parking. And our parking is usually a problem on the weekends. No school on the weekends. Loaves and fishes. And I'll even say the dumpsters that are behind both roads and the other. They don't dump the dumpsters on the weekend. They usually dump it on Tuesday or Friday. I think there could be parking there. I also think motorcycle parking would be very simple. Maybe not easy. And I thought springs could be motorcycle friendly. I have a couple other comments. You guys have a tough job. And I'm done. I'm not finished, but I'm done.
Dan, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Uh, next up, Candy from 1039 Colorado. And let me say, thank you for your patience. I appreciate it.
I'm Candy McElroy. I live at 1039 Colorado. I wanted to talk about parking before it was to be a good problem when those apartments are filled. I personally have parking in my house, but a lot of the neighbors and a lot of the homes, even three or four blocks each way, don't have parking. And like Bonnie said, you know, for an older, and me too, an older person to carry groceries. And we pay taxes. We should be able to park in front of our homes. I'm sorry, but we should be able to. I think maybe a solution will be for either the city or maybe the individual homeowners have a sign right in front of their property. It'd say 1039 Colorado Boulevard. Some people think two parking spots would be great. It would be helpful if it was just one. So when you come home late at night, you would be guaranteed a parking place. And it wouldn't be that difficult. It would be something that the city could do now before it gets to be a real problem. And people before they move into the apartments would adjust to it and know that it's there and they can park there. And I, I, I really think that it's not going to be just from 12th to Carlson. I think it's going to be a long way down Colorado Boulevard in the future. Where, where people are going to be parking and they're going to be walking. And so, you know, I, I don't know if you guys want to do paid parking all the way down, but I think in the future it's going to be something. It's not, it's not going to work. And we need to think about it before people move into those apartments. Which, you know, I will say, when I went to all those planning meetings, as long as I'm here, I'll say this. When I went to all those planning meetings, it was supposed to be two stories. And now it doesn't, I will, it doesn't affect except for the two windows in my house. I see those buildings. But there's so many people, it was supposed to be two stories going down and then two stories up. Now these atrocities are right in our face all the time. And, you know, you guys, so they're there, but you could do something about parking. And the other thing is, you know, I'll be across the soul. So that's going to be another parking issue for all those homes that don't have parking. Thanks.
Candy, thank you. Janine, welcome and thank you so much for your patience. Please come on up. Yes.
She covered everything.
Oh, boy. All right.
I thought she did. We could accept both.
I want to thank everybody for their public comment. You know, we appreciate folks giving up their evening and frankly, this was a case where you gave a lot more of your evening than you were planning on. And we, we very much appreciate you putting yourself out there and standing up there at the podium is, is never fun. And we can't thank you enough for giving, giving up your time tonight. So thank you very much. And everybody is of course welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize you for coming in tonight and talking about a, a very serious, well, actually there were, there were a few very serious items. Thank you.
Oh, we'll be back.
No problem.
I promise she will.
We will move on to the finance officer. Beautiful mind. Oh, very good.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you tonight.
Nice to have you.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. I'm here tonight for an update of the city's finances through June of 2025. I'm trying to get this. Here it goes. And I want to see if that's big enough for everyone before I start talking through it.
Maybe a little bigger if you can.
Okay.
Does everybody see that?
Well, as usual, we start with our combined cash statement, which shows your various checking accounts at the top. And coming up with $3,781,000 at the end of June. And all of that was distributed to each fund as shown below. I highlighted the allocation to the general fund and you'll see that's the general fund share of this total of 3.78 million dollars. So on the very next page is the balance sheet for the general fund and there's that figure right there. The general fund owns 448,000 of those dollars. You have some other assets and liabilities here, but down, whoops, down in the middle of the page is the fund balance. And that's always the beginning fund balance at the beginning of the year. So this is showing that through June, you started the year with a million three. You've got revenue expenditures over revenues year to date, drawing that down by about 538,000. To give you ending fund equity of 815,000. So we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the end of the general fund. The next page is your city revenues. And I've highlighted as usual, the top 10 budgeted revenues, the top highest amounts. And you can just kind of see what was collected through the same date as these financial statements, June 30th in 2023, in 2024. And so far this year in 2025. The period actual is June only, but all those others are year to date at the end of June. So you'll see that the property taxes are about like they were in 2023. And those, you usually get all your property taxes and the third big tranche of property taxes should arrives in July. Your sales taxes are at about 40% of budget, the far right number. So far, the budget being 2.2 million and you having received 871,000, which again is looking better than the same time in 2023 or 2024. So that's a good sign. Your motor vehicle use taxes, you've got almost half of those. And your franchise fees from public service company, Excel Energy, is, is at 60%. Then down below, you have your building permit fees. You've got 250,000 budgeted. And one never knows how many are going to come in in a given year. It's not, it's out of your control. But you have received about 35,000 so far this year, which is more than at this point in either of the last two years. So that's promising. And then your other taxes and other licenses, the county road and bridge, you'll probably get everything that's budgeted there. You usually do. And then you get a lot of fine revenue. So far this year has come in very high and, and probably related to the construction and more violations of speed limits, I would guess. But the next page shows your leases and rents, which is one of your bigger revenues. At the bottom of that page is the total fund revenues, 4,43,600,000 were budgeted. And through June, you've received a million eight twenty. In the past two years, you received through June, a million six and a million seven. So again, your, your revenues are looking pretty strong this year. The next page will start looking at all of your departments in the general fund that are spending this money that comes in. And usually I'll just go to the bottom line on these departments and you can see what the percentages halfway through the year of what their budget was, it's been spent. But you can also just kind of look here on, on streets and see that, you know, salaries is usually one of the bigger budgeted line items in all of your departments, except for the ones that have big capital projects. And your salaries are right around 56%, which you would expect in June. The end, the streets department ends on the next page and it's at almost 60% at this point through the year. Then you've got administration, it's at 56%, community promotion at 37.9% and building inspector at 22. And you have a pretty hefty budget there. Probably because of the projects that are going on that are giving you the offsetting revenues that we already talked about. Police, look at those salaries, right smack dab on 50%. Way to budget, guys. The whole department is at around 53.8% for the year. So any, anyone that's running slightly over, you just want to keep an eye on it. Everything's not even. Sometimes you have to pay things upfront at the beginning of the year. Certain, you know, costs are one time only. So it's not necessarily a bad sign if it's over 50%, but you want to be knowing why as a department head. My contributions to the fire department are right on track. Oh, and here's the summary for the police is at 45% essentially for its entire budget. Fire department's at 50%. That's a flat rate that gets sent over. Parks department is at 43. And cemetery hasn't had any action yet. So total fund expenditures are at about 51% for the year, 52 halfway through the year. On the bottom line here, you'll see under the budget column, the net revenue over expenditures was intended to be drawn, to be in the negative this year. The budget was to draw down some of that general fund balance you started the year with and use it for some expenses this year. So far you haven't got your third tranche of the property taxes and probably some other revenues and grants that are coming in. So it is looking like there's a bigger negative than you've budgeted. But we'll, we keep an eye on that and I know that Andy and Guy do as well. So if there's any issues that are, are real, not just timing issues, those will be brought to your attention. Sands and Cemetery Trust Fund has no activity except a little bit of interest earned. But the Ramp Fund for Colorado Boulevard is as usual gradually being drawn down for its intended uses. But so far over, so far this year through June, it's gotten more revenue from interest than it spent of the funds. But it started the year at $674,000. There's that interest coming in. We've gotten about half of what's been budgeted, so that's good. And then you've got only, only 50,000 budgeted of note. Although there are some expenses that get prorated here from other, other employees. About 2% of certain people's salary in administration. But this project for asphalt curbing gutter through June had not been expended. Again, this budget was intended to be drawn, drawn down during the year for the asphalt curbing gutter use. The Improvement Fund is starting, starting this month with a negative cash. But it does have receivables that are coming in that will offset that. And it does have this big advance still due from the wastewater fund for 443,000. So its net assets are 570,000. Down here in the revenues, over expenditures, it's being drawn down so far, but let's look at those revenues and expenditures. Again, here's your revenue page and a lot of it is similar to the general fund because some of these are shared revenues, split between the two funds. So the sales tax, a quarter of, of your sales tax goes in here. And that's at 42.5%. Same with your motor vehicle. And then you do have some large grants that will be expected to be coming in that will offset some of the monetary losses that we're seeing so far. In the Improvement Fund expenditures, we've got some salaries charged there. We have a lot of big round numbers here in the budget column for various capital improvements. Streets, gate, parks, et cetera. Some of them are starting to have some amounts there. Some of them haven't been started yet. There's 500,000 for land acquisition, a million five for police station improvements. So there's a fair amount that's budgeted that has not yet been spent through June. It's only about 25%. Here's some other projects for City Hall improvements. There's nothing there so far through this point in the year and about half of the site improvement money has been spent so far. So your total fund expenditures in this improvement fund are at about 24% of what's budgeted. And you're expecting to again draw down those, some of the fund balances to use for accomplishing these projects. So the 413,000 is expected to be a decline in the fund balance this year. Right now it's at 410, but as we saw, a lot of the grants haven't come in yet. Conservation Trust Fund is pretty plain in comparison. These are the monies from the lottery that you can always spend on grants and, I'm sorry, on parks and certain recreational projects. And the funds come in at a small amount. Make sure it's on the fund balance you've been building up and you're planning to use that later. Now there are no expenditures forecast budgeted for 2025. So it's expected that this 7,155 will grow to 6,000. So flipping back to the first page of this fund where you started the year with 123,000, you're expecting to add 16,000 to that by year end. You're expecting to add sixteen thousand to that by year end.
Or or Ray, could I ask you to hold up just one minute? Uh, you're breaking up and I I just want to make sure there's anything on our end.
Yeah, I'm looking and I don't see anything.
It just happened very suddenly.
It says our connection, at least from the Zoom. Internet connection, but uh at least looking at the Zoom, it looks.
Well, all right, it appears to be okay on our end. Uh, please continue.
I mean, it could be, it's because we just part of the message and said, yeah, Lorraine is breaking up for her.
Ah, gotcha.
Not in the room.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, unfortunately, you're breaking up pretty bad still. I'm sorry, we're we don't know why. Can you hear us okay?
I'm not getting, yes, fine. I'm not getting any error messages on my side.
I I would ask that you continue. It's it's broken up, but I think we can still make it out as long as we follow with the paper. Oh, yeah. Uh, Janine uh had a great idea, perhaps uh go ahead and turn off the camera. Just sometimes that helps. Your camera. Well, we'll follow along with the pages though.
Right, is that any better?
Uh, maybe a little bit.
Okay, there's the Conservation Trust Fund. It's going to grow by about sixteen thousand during the this year and be used in a future year.
Yeah, Lorraine, it's actually better. Thank you for trying that.
Sure, good idea. Um, street sales tax fund starts started two thousand and twenty-five with a million two. And so far you've added uh two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to that. So you've got fund equity of a million five. That's great. Again, this comes in through sales taxes. Uh, another quarter of your sales tax goes to this fund. And it's earning a fair amount of interest every uh every year. And then here are your expenditures. There's a again about two percent of certain administrative salaries get charged here. And then there's uh capital projects budgeted. So and you also pay your interest and principal payments on the streets, on the street bonds that you issued several years ago. Water fund, this is looking good. You've got cash of about two hundred and fifty-three thousand. You've got receivables of much more than that. And but so far this year, you've got expenditures over revenues of about nine hundred and fourteen thousand. So we will talk about that um again as we go through to the end. So you do have sales tax coming in here. Uh, a half a penny that comes in every month. You have uh your usage charges for services. And you bill every other month and this does reflect three of the bills for the year. So you're about where you were in two thousand and twenty-three. Two thousand and twenty-four was much higher. So I'm wondering, as I said that, if maybe a third one isn't posted yet. We shall see. I believe it is. Uh, the water lease is a little bit of revenue. And your total revenue is expected to be three five point four, including these big grants. Uh, two point eight in a Dola grant for water main project. And then about you've gotten some also from the Colorado uh Water Conservation Board Grant. Operations are at fifty-two percent of their budget. Distribution is at twenty-six percent of its budget. And then your big expenditures are in the capital, which is um your water distribution projects. Now, when you get these grants that we talked about, um, they're always on a reimbursement basis as far as getting the money in the bank. And that could be a reason why the cash was low and it was showing revenues lower than expenditures. Because you have to make the expenditures before you submit for the grant reimbursement revenues. This fund, however, was budgeted to use a million dollars this year and of its past reserves in order to get these big projects done. Um, it it's so far about nine hundred and fourteen thousand of the reserves have are being used with hopefully more grant uh reimbursement coming. Wastewater uh has a hundred and forty-seven thousand in its cash and some about three times that much in re- receivables. It owes a lot of cash to the Sales Tax Improvement Fund, as we mentioned earlier. So it doesn't have enough money to buy to pay that back yet. But you may remember it has paid back quite a bit because that that figure used to be over uh two million. So last year it was able to pay back quite a bit of what was owed to the Sales Tax Improvement Fund. But you have so many projects there you want to get done that it's really important that wastewater does pay that money back for the intended uses of that fund. Here are your revenues and expenditures. The user fees again, now these are just about what you would expect to see in the past two years. In the around five eighty-two so far, you get the sales tax that comes in and you get some interest on it. You've got um grant it's revenue that you have already received in this fund of two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. From Madam. Operations are expenditures are at forty-two percent, collections at thirty-one. And then you've got your projects going on. You're about halfway through your wastewater collection project. And a little bit started on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Again, this bu- this budget was budgeted to bring down existing reserves by a million two. And similar to water fund, it's down by nine hundred and six thousand uh so far this year. You also have made half uh one of your two uh half of your debt service payments for the year for each of your um uh loans from the Colorado Water Resources Authority. And then we get to the parking fund. It has eight hundred and twenty-two thousand in cash and it has some liabilities against that that are much less than the total uh assets that you have. And so you've got you've got revenues under under expenditures in this fund also. It's still a million point three at this point in time in fun in equity. So here are your parking fees. They're budgeted at about oh, we we did correct this. They're supposed to be budgeted at five hundred eighty thousand. Uh, Andy pointed this out to me this morning and we have made the correction. The five eighty should be here. So you're, you know, not halfway to the budget yet. And the twenty-five thousand is should be here on the interest. So you are about halfway to your interest budget. You're expecting some contributions that haven't come in yet. And but you have received some payments in in lieu of construction from some of your developers. Capital expenses are most significant here on the bottom in the design and engineering uh for your mobility center and parking structure and the capital projects. So this fund again has drawn down its fund balance so far. It is anticipated to to add to its fund balance during the year if all the revenues and expenditures play out as planned. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Lorraine, that was very enlightening as usual. Uh, let me ask council, uh, any questions for Lorraine? No, but uh uh thank you so much for going over that with us.
You're welcome. I appreciate the opportunity. Have a good night.
Well, thank you. You too. All right, next up, I'd like to move on to resolutions. We'll start with resolution number twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two, series two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution designating an temporary handicap parking space at four seventeen fifteenth avenue, northwest parking space on fifteenth avenue nearest.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Janine. Thank.
Yep.
Uh, okay. And um any discussion? Oh, in this case, uh, we have already been told that this may end up being permanent. With all of the metal she still has in her.
That's what I thought.
How much metal do you need in your body to get a handicap?
That's a good question, Scott. That's a good question. Uh, and Scott's question, uh, do do we revisit this after a year? Does anybody know?
For a year they come in and ask for it again for an extension and then you can just extend it, extend it. As far as I know, I haven't seen one that's permanent in mine.
Very good.
The temporary means that we put out our temporary signs, whereas if we need this permanent, that we can we can give a sign right there.
Or do you have a poll? You have a permanent poll or is it just a little?
It's just a temporary.
All right, all right, good. Um, but got the bottom of that. Uh, any further questions?
Just could admin be the ones to do that so that they don't have to come to council? They could just call you up and go, this is still my situation. Is that, I wonder, what do you think?
I don't know if I get some term.
Well, sure. I mean, I don't need you to hobble in here. You know, every year. To reapply. I mean, it's all getting younger. Benjamin Button over here. So we're
Will accidentally forget that this is.
There you go. Perfect.
Take a look at the help code written here.
Yeah. I think you guys do this kind of stuff. I don't.
All right, uh, any further questions? Eric, non-roll call, please. Yes. Uh, next up, resolution number twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve resolution number twenty-three, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement with the county for coordination of the two thousand and twenty-five election.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, second, Lisa. Any discussion? Eric, non-roll call, please. Yes. And uh up next is uh resolution twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
On the two for resolution number twenty-four, series twenty-three-five, resolution amending the twenty-four series public and without the salary range, job is pushing the public works.
Thank you, Janine. Do I have a second? Uh, second, Jimmy. And any discussion?
I'm still focused on doing that internally.
Yes. All right, any any further questions? Eric, non-roll call, please. And uh lastly, uh, on under resolutions number twenty-five, do I have a motion?
Move to approve resolution number twenty-five, series twenty-three-five, resolution adopting the executive report from the city council, strategic planning retreats.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Lisa. And any discussion? Eric, non-roll call, please. Yes. Uh, we only have one ordinance first reading tonight, number sixteen. Do I have a motion?
I want to approve ordinance number sixteen, series twenty-five, an ordinance adopting a new section fifteen dash fifty-nine of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code concerning motor vehicle registration.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Janine. And any discussion?
Is this going to be something difficult to enforce, but I we do enforce it. I think it'll go a long way to making some other neighbors quite happy if unregistered vehicles were off the roads.
Uh, I I would but as far as difficulty, uh
Do you want to say something?
So so currently, the way uh that law was, it wasn't part of the uh auto traffic code. So officers would stop people for speeding. And they would not have insurance, but they also have expired tags. So it puts an officer in the way the process is, is typically write all citations into one court. So under the current process, an officer had to make a decision. Are they going to write just speeding and no insurance ticket and then just not write the the other court? Because that had to go to county court for registration.
Interesting.
So I think that's also what led to a lot of um, you know, we're policing on behalf of the city. So we typically choose to write into our city court system versus uh the county court system for low level traffic offenses. We tip, we only use the county court system for uh more, I guess, higher level offenses. So it was creating a situation where the judges and the courts not like separating so that we wouldn't write the two here and write the one over there.
Sure.
So what happened was, in essence, it's an eighty-five dollar ticket versus the three hundred dollar or you know, two hundred dollar other tickets. So the officers would make the decision, I think rightly so, they're working for the city by those brain to write into this report. There thereby, it exacerbates the problem of people driving around with expired registration. So so this is not just an item of strings issue. This is an issue in other cities across Colorado. So by adopting this, this is gonna gonna give the city and the officer just the ability to more to to enforce a law that already exists.
Will they also be enforcing parked cars?
So that part I need to take a look to see what what the app, what that aspect of this is. Because that's that's a fair or it's typically when you're writing a ticket, you're writing a ticket to the driver. So for car, you're writing a ticket to the registered owner.
Mayor, we do have our city attorney, I believe, online. I don't know if she's prepared to uh, talk about this at this point, but maybe she might be able to weigh in.
Oh, that's a good point here. Uh, Carmen, I don't know if you heard this discussion, but we were just talking about the the ordinance uh regarding uh uh vehicles without per registration.
I did hear that, Mayor and Council, and I uh I apologize, I clicked my video on, but I don't see myself. So if you see me, yay, but I don't see me. Um, I am uh not aware. I'm looking right now at our code to see if the parked vehicle, let me see, parking, 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 parking. Uh, would be right oftentimes, um, parking an inoperable vehicle on the right of way is prohibited. And oftentimes, um, inoperable is defined as including, you know, a vehicle that's not registered to to legally operate. Uh, my suspicion, although I'm not seeing it right now as I quickly look at the code. My suspicion is that parking on the right of way uh and not being registered might be something that we prohibit, but I'm, you know what? I'll I'll follow up with you, counsel, on that. Um, indeed, this particular ordinance is a result of a change in state law. Um, and again, it's a it's a big boon to be able to uh combine uh charges, as mentioned. And um, you know, be able to write, how many, you know, not up to date licensed cars do we all see driving around every day? I know I sure do. Um, so this will give the um officers um in the PD the ability to write those and I'll make myself a note and follow up with you and Chief Busack on the parked issue. Happy to do that.
Thank you, Karen. And I don't mean to drag this out, but my other question from Chief or or you is will this also cover cars that aren't properly tagged? Like they literally have any tags in there?
Yes.
Yep.
And front tags go back to, I mean, the front tags annoys me. I I thought that was the law.
Yeah.
That's, that is true.
So would this cover that?
That's just improper display of registration.
Okay. So that would.
All right. Well, uh, at the very least, this strengthens our, our hands.
Sure.
It does.
I like it.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? Eric, non-roll call, please.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Scott now.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Mayor B. D. Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, we will move on to, uh, second reading. Only have one tonight, uh, ordinance number eleven. Do I have a motion?
Isn't it, I think it's a hearing.
Oh, oh, hang on, sorry. Yeah. I am sorry, I have my motion, uh, spiel for, uh, the, uh, executive session. I won't have it for the, uh, public hearing. It's gonna kinda escape.
Yeah, it should be up there jumbled in something, I'm sure, but here's my copy. I just need it back, okay?
Thank you. You got it. You got it. Uh, this hearing will come to order. This is a public hearing before the city council of the city of Idaho Springs on ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending section twenty-one dash fifteen, twenty-one dash fifty, twenty-one sixty-three, and twenty-one dash one oh six, and twenty-one dash one twenty-seven, Idaho Springs Municipal Code, uh, to adjust regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units in response to House Bill twenty-four dash eleven fifty-two, and making conforming amendments in, uh, connection, uh, wherewith. Uh, state law requires a public hearing on ordinance that amend the city zoning code. Uh, this hearing is now, uh, declared open, uh, eight oh two. And, uh, I would ask, uh, staff for presentation of the ordinance.
Sure. Hi, fellow counsel. Happy to present. Um, as we discussed at work session, uh, a month ago, we state passed new House Bill twenty-four dash eleven fifty-two, which requires certain ADU regulations that are consistent with that bill. And we, uh, this seeks to address that, to promote additional accessory dwelling unit development in town. And also just, independently of that, may recall, we had an integrated housing opportunity program grant last year, IHOP grant, that focused on creating, uh, recommendations for ordinance to encourage housing, and this ordinance would address two of those, uh, about minimums for footages radios as well as spanning where ADUs are allowed. So going into our code, there's a few changes that are needed. The first is about the size of dwelling units. The change would be to allow for an accessory dwelling unit to be up to seven hundred and fifty square feet, or fifty percent of gross floor area of the main dwelling, whichever is more. The change is essentially to clarify that any ADU can be at least seven hundred and fifty square feet. That's required by that bill. The second is to expand where zoning districts or where ADUs are allowed. Right now, we only allow them in R E, R one, R two, R three. This will expand it to R N, which is required by law, because that does a lot to defend the zoning, as well as the historic downtown C one, C two districts, where there's a lot of existing housing that could potentially have need. The third would be to amend the development standards. Currently, we would require accessory dwelling units to be all setbacks. The House Bill requires us to allow accessory dwelling units to be five feet from the rear or side property line. I wouldn't change front property lines, but this will allow accessory dwelling units to be slightly closer to rear and side property lines. And the next is about the approval, uh, process. So currently, based on our code in R three or R N, technically, since it would be a new building potentially in those districts, we'd be required to have a final development and public hearing because it's a new building, and, uh, not allowed to acquire that, and also I don't think, since it's just such a growing, and we never really wanted to acquire that, um, so that clarifies that those would be straight through the board, if it means all of that. The findings of parking will change. The way that the bill reads is basically, you can apply, require off-street parking when we do one space, but you can only require it if the following applies. One is that there's not an existing off-street parking space. It also is in a zone district that requires one or more parking spaces for the primary dwelling, and also is located on a block where on-street parking is prohibited. There are some blocks in town where on-street parking is prohibited. If you were on that block, you would still have to provide an off-street space. Otherwise, this, you know, this is perhaps the change that could have a bigger impact on neighbors and things like that, because essentially, if you already have off-street parking, you're allowed to have on-street parking. You couldn't require a new parking space. Um, with all that said, Scott believes that it, it makes sense to pass this ordinance and, uh, encourage more ADUs. It opens it up for several grant funding opportunities that we can use. It also does encourage potential development, which generally is, you know, affordable. So, that's.
Dylan, uh, I would just like, uh, to ask Council if you have any questions. I know we've talked about this a lot, but, um, uh, before you, you take your seat, does, uh, Council have any, uh, questions for those?
In our work session, it was maybe twenty places and potentially.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of practice.
Right. And, you know, maybe there's more places that could fit it inside their existing home, and that would be something where you say, well, if I have a unfinished basement or something, there's probably not a lot of those, or I have like a spare room and I could update that and convert it, and previously you couldn't do it because you couldn't build off-street parking. This might open it up for someone like that as well. Um, but I think that's.
All right. Uh, do we have any, uh, public comment, uh, on this tonight or online?
Let's see if anyone raised their hand. If you have any public problems, please. Allow you.
All right. Uh, well, Dylan, uh, thank you for checking on that. As we have no one, um, here at City Hall in person talk about it, no one's online. I will now, uh, close, uh, public comment, and I, um, will, uh, say that we are, are closing the hearing at eight oh eight. And, uh, Council, uh, for your perusal on page one oh two is a suggested sample motion. Uh, I would ask, um, is there any, uh, discussion that Council would like to have regarding this before I entertain a motion? All right, then, uh, may I, uh, have a motion?
It's nine o'clock.
I'll move to for our list number eleven, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending sections twenty-one dash fifteen, twenty-one dash fifty-eight, twenty-one dash sixty-three, twenty-one dash one oh six, and twenty-one dash one oh seven of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code to adjust regulations pertaining to accessory dwellings in response to House Bill twenty-four dash eleven fifty-two and making conforming amendments.
Thank you, Janine. And, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Scott?
I got it.
Uh, second. And, uh, thank you. And, uh, any discussion? Eric, non-roll call, please.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Scott now.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Mayor B. D. Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, we, next up, have, uh, City Attorney, uh, Carmen. Good to have you with us. And, uh, there is a request for action about the opioid, uh, settlements. And, uh, just wanted to see if there was, uh, anything that you would like to discuss with Council?
No, thank you, Mayor. Happy to see you, Council. Um, and you, of course, Mayor, as part of Council. Uh, I attempted to, in the memo that you see from me in your packets, uh, outline sort of the history of all of this opioid settlement business. Perhaps for those of you who, um, may not have been a council in, in this journey, um, has been long. And, um, in twenty twenty-one, you can see from the memo, we began to coordinate as a community, the city, with the state AG's office in participating as a city in sort of these global settlements that the pharma companies were beginning to enter into. Uh, thus far, as you can see, we, uh, as a city, you as a council, have approved ten, uh, different settlements with, uh, um, folks, companies, providers, uh, who, uh, contributed to the opioid epidemic. Uh, this would be the eleventh, uh, such settlement, if you approved it because of the city's prior approval and entering into, um, of an IGA, um, concerning our participation in region ten, um, under an intergovernmental agreement, uh, to decide regionally how the settlement funds would be distributed and spent in the region. That includes Clear Creek, Gilpin, and Jefferson County. Because of our approval, your approval of that IGA previous, previously, when these individual settlements come up with these individual pharmaceutical companies, all that is required of you is to make a motion, uh, if you wish, to participate in the particular settlement agreement. So at the bottom of, uh, my memo in the packet, you see a suggested motion there. Um, if you are inclined to approve the city's participation in this one, um, I, I would ask you to make that motion. But before then, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good. Uh, any questions for Carmen? Uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
We will be able to submit petition in release form concerning the settlement authorized in there.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? A second from Lisa. Any further discussion?
I'll be safe this one. Sitting out like a way to the air brackets opioid council. His resilience. Deep under the C check, correspondent program. Um, some additional treatment recovery options for opioid, um, vicin. Advocates for recovery Colorado. So that's a good pure, um, recovery support. They were actually down at the block party, so they're doing like, kind of like pure recovery coaching and like sober events and things like that. And they have an office now with the wellness center just there. So I think those are the main ones. And then we funded some things in Jeffco and Gilpin, that also, um, like natural recovery, like housing and things like that, that people from through the county can access.
Janine, thank you for giving your time, uh, on that as well. Uh, any further discussion? Our hearing non-roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Scott now.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Mayor B. D. Jones.
Yes. Uh, next up, we have, uh, City Administrator.
Yep.
One request for action. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move to through the proposal from historic yield ventures LLC with an amount seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five to complete the restoration and frame through its seventy, now twenty-one dash sixty-one dash seventy.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, second from Kate. And, uh, any discussion? Uh, any, uh, any further, uh, discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Scott now.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor B. D. Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And, uh, Andy, before we move off City Administrator, I just wanna make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us. Nothing further. All right.
Administration departments.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I'm just missing, missing a page there. Uh, I don't know why mine didn't.
Yeah, mine came out weird too.
That's strange. Uh, thank you for, uh, working on my, my, uh, technical challenges. Uh, Assistant City Administrator, uh, no request for action. Guy, I wanted to make sure you didn't have anything, uh, further.
Well, yeah, one thing that came across today, Senator Bennett's office informed, uh, the city that, um, the congressionally-directed spending request for the X two forty project will not be moving forward with them, unfortunately.
Yeah. And if I remember right, I think we were asking for about two million on that. And, uh, as you know, uh, congressionally-directed spending, and it's kind of a hail mary. Uh, so, uh, you know, I know we're all sorry to hear that, but I, none of us, uh, think that was, uh, unexpected. So, I'll, I'll appreciate the update, guy. Uh, Dylan. Oh, yeah, sure.
Guy, I saw your, um, memo about resident parking signs, and I would like to add in there, I know this is sort of a pain, but I was at the block party, uh, the slum makers' party, and I talked to a number of businesses who asked that maybe we have signs that ask bikers to stop in between the avenues, because they're like, they're not stopping, looking for traffic.
On like minor?
On minors, so on the, on the barriers that we have on minor, like each side, you know, please stop for cross-traffic. Because they, like, I had three different people say something to me. One person, I'm like, eh, but when three people say something, it means, and they're like, I don't wanna hit a biker, which is totally fair.
Right here.
And I counted, it would be like ten signs if you did every barrier both sides. So it's not a huge thing, but I think it might help. I mean, now that we don't have a lot of time.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Is that yours?
Yeah.
All right. Um, Dylan, again, uh, thank you, especially for, uh, last, uh, session. That was, uh, there, there was a lot been put on that. I, I know we got a lot out of that. Uh, and you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight?
All right.
All right. Uh, and Wunder, uh, thank you, uh, for your report. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share. All right, thanks.
You doing okay, Wunder?
Are you on track, um, with the same number of phone calls this month that you had last month?
I don't even count until after the vote is over, truthfully, so I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
Does it feel like it?
Because I was gone a week, probably not. But then I came back to a bunch of voicemails, so maybe.
I looked your part. I think there was a couple of really good ideas in there as well, so.
Yeah, I learned a lot.
Some to bring up.
Sure. I have more. That was only, that, that was not even the full first day.
Yeah.
I'm trying to break it out. Readable, some good stuff in there. Yeah, absolutely.
And on top of that, we're seeing sixty, seventy phone calls a day kind of thing. It's pretty crazy.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, I call it like ten, so.
So you can't have one. You can't use one all day, Kate.
Well, uh, well, thank you. And, uh, just 'cause, uh, Chief is up next. Um, thanks for getting, uh, this bill in, and Wunder, Wunder, you did, uh, have a copy?
I do, yes, thank you.
All right. And, uh, Chief, thank you for your report. Never a dull moment.
Oh, my God.
And I, I just, uh, wanna make sure that you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight?
Uh, just add one thing. We'll be doing a, a post tomorrow about, there was an incident where somebody pulled a knife on somebody. They have to put on social media. So, um, we'll have a warrant for that person. It'll be issued tomorrow.
So you guys gotta make a statement on social media.
Yep.
Okay.
So just wanted to update, book update on that.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Uh, Ed, you're up next, uh, Public Works. Well, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, that was part of our, uh, our, uh, Jeremy amended the agenda. Get that on the wheels. Um, Public Works Departments, uh, and, uh, Ed, uh, we have a record number. And isn't less. Yeah. She start check, uh, busy. Yeah, I'm sure. Sure you are. And, uh, brother, you got, uh, underwater facilities, you got six requests for action. So, uh, let's kick it off here with, uh, number one. Wall Street Paving. Do I have a motion?
I was gonna. I'll move to approve paving of Wall Street by eight fast patch in the amount of $104,000. I don't know how to say that.
Hundred and four thousand.
Thank you. That's what it is. From line item 23 dash 00 dash 1616.
Thank you, Kate. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. And any discussion?
Oh, I do.
I have a, a comment on it is that we had already voted on this for a previous contractor, F and F, which was unable to find an asphalt favor to actually pave Wall Street. But Hank, our guy, our main man guy here, Hank, who's familiar with the town, is our second. The first company was less expensive.
Ed, thank you for pointing that out. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Kate Pollyer.
Yes.
Lisa Manapole. Yes. Jim Clark.
Yes.
Scott Mill.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Herman.
Yes. And a second motion for the sanitary sewer hookup. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to move right of the street sanitary sewer line hook up to the new main in an 60,950 to Apex Underground. The subcontractors, Mountain West Contractors, in line item 52 dash 72 dash 71.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second? Second from Janine. And any discussion? Hearing none?
Mayor, if anybody wanted to just repeat what you mentioned in the work session about, we just had been approved these hookups before by council, but now.
Right, yeah, this had been previously approved. So and since there was only one, so there's, you know, 5,000 bucks a piece that we won't have to spend on the other six.
Yeah.
So that's kind of a wash.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Mill.
Yes.
Kate Pollyer.
Yes.
Janine Mariani. Yes.
Yes.
Lisa Manapole. Yes. Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Herman.
Yes. And the third item is demolition of a building. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve demolition of buildings located at 103 Idaho Springs Road, AKA Ballpark Square, charge to Empire demolition in the amount of $18,760 from item number 21 dash 00 dash 6032.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, a second?
Second.
A second. Kate, and any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to give a shout out to Ed and his crew for really expediting this project. With all the other work they have to do, they found a way to get the site mostly cleared. The building, the barrage is still there, but they accelerated getting the things they wanted to salvage out of there and down the public works, the new public works yard. And we're on track to have that area. Can't get the building demoed at the time. We don't get the state verdict by the time. The building might still be there, but most of that area has been cleared. It can be used for art due in time for rapid draft.
Well, excellent. All right. Absolutely. And Ed, thank you, all of us. Without any, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manapole.
Yes.
Scott Mill.
Yes.
Kate Pollyer.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Herman.
And next up, item number four, another demolition. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve contract with a water treatment facility in Brownsville. Hearing for a ESAS support and equipment for the amount of $46,630.
Down. And. Yeah, Scott, I'm sorry. It's, it's number four, the second demolition.
Start of. Move to approve demolition of building located in 1856 Colorado Boulevard, AKA Big Ass, to Empire demolition in the amount of $10,370 from line item number 59 dash 70 dash 7901.
Thank you, Scott. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Kate Pollyer. Yes. Lisa Manapole. Yes. Scott Mill.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani. Yes. Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Herman.
Yes.
I was just trying to speak.
Oh, I know. Trust me.
I do appreciate your effort.
Why I do that all the time. Number five for water treatment facility. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve contract with a water treatment facility with Brownsville and hearing for a ESAS. ESAS support and equipment to be about $46,630 down and $3,109 a month for five years.
Thank you, Janine. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Jeremy. And any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Janine Mariani. Yes. Scott Mill.
Yes.
Lisa Manapole. Yes. Kate Pollyer.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Herman.
Yes. And last but not least, item number six. Do I have a motion?
Take a motion for the contract. At the water resource regulation slowly withdrawn 70 degrees of these gas support equipment in the amount of $61,000, $157 down and $4,344 a month for a period of five years.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second? Second from Janine. And any discussion?
So at the monitoring that we were talking about earlier, that tells you if you have a critical problem, if you have a problem too, right?
Absolutely. So it sends out alarms. Yeah.
That's invaluable when it comes to knowing that knowledge, right? When it happens, right? There's no way to get away.
Yeah, alarms, remote access, text messaging. Everything, everything. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Scott Mill.
Yes.
Kate Pollyer.
Yes.
Lisa Manapole. Yes. Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Herman.
Yes. And I will move down to Mayor's. And I just want to point out on the last page of your packet, we were receiving a thank you for the youth scholarships, youth commissioners, youth award. And we have been allocating this money for youth awards for years now. And anyways, I, I think all of us feel this is very worthwhile and it was nice that they acknowledged the award recipients. And we have a very heartfelt thank you from the mayor's and commissioners, youth award of a local town. And before we go on to executive session, I just want to see if anyone else has anything to share for the good of the org?
I do have a question. Good question. One is, is anybody aware of the bike park conversation that's going to happen at the library on Tuesday regarding possible new bike park sign in the city limits? But it will definitely be something that's going to be interesting. So it will be a paid bike park. That is the proposal. It's also the same bike park that failed in Jeffco over in Conifer area. So just letting you know that they are looking at 100 acres right there, right outside the city limits. So it's at four o'clock at the library. They don't expect anybody. They're bypassing planning commission because at this point in time, they're just going, they're trying to see if anybody is going to oppose them the way they did in Jeffco. And they don't have as many neighbors as that proposal did, so might be something interesting if anybody.
My goodness. I did not see that coming and I had not heard about that.
So I just sent Lisa a thing. And then I was curious, who, who do we use for the city as our HR department? How does that work in the city? So all HR has to go to you.
Certainly. It's a team effort, but yes, in the code, I mean, I am the HR person.
I'd like to review that in the future. I can't really say publicly why, but it has nothing to do with you personally, Andy. It has to do with small industry, small businesses that are in-house HR. I don't think it works. Personally, I had an experience at another job where it didn't work. I just want to make sure that our staff, either here or anywhere in the city, feel that they have somebody that they can go to that is 100% impartial.
I don't have that.
No.
All right, I'm going to send to executive session. I'm going to read by spiel and ask for a second. And I move you on to executive session under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses A, and parentheses E, to discuss the potential acquisition of real property, determine strategy, and to instruct negotiators concerning the same. Announcements, I would also like to add that at the conclusion of our executive session, we will technically be coming out, but only for the purposes of adjourned our regular session.
Looking for a second?
Just a second. And do I have a second?
Awesome.
A second from Lisa, thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And and I am just checking to see.
Thanks, Wunder.
Have a good night, Wunder, have a good night.
Do I have Wunder? You're wonderful.